Okay, good morning Carroll County. This is Commissioner Ed Rothstein. I'm signing in virtually.
Muted.
Explain that in just a minute. It is Thursday, February 4th for our open session.
Unmuted.
Always do each week. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance and then take a moment of silence and reflection on family and friends. And keeping always those in emergency services and our health occupation and health services in our thoughts. For their strength and courage as we move forward. So with that, let's stand.
This conference will now be recorded.
Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, let me, let me kick this off with Prior Carol and explain why I am virtual. Because I'm looking for strength, courage, and sanity as I'm stuck in a house. My son Sam. Tested positive for COVID-19. He lost his sense of smell and taste. Fortunately, it has come back. My wife Audrey tested positive. I took the rapid test, tested negative, and then took the lab test and again tested negative. Why that happens, I don't know. It's very difficult to quarantine within the house. But that's the facts. And so with that said, following by CDC guidelines, I am staying away. We have not traveled. Outside of the house and we'll get through this, you know, and we'll get through this together. It's almost become a nuisance more than anything at this point, you know, in our house, but you know, thank goodness for Netflix and puzzles. And we're getting a lot of things done. And then I will finish up prior to Carol in a minute, but let me. Send it off to my colleagues. Commissioner Frazier is not with us this morning. And with that, let's start with Commissioner Boucher.
Thank you, Commissioner Rothstein, and Lord be with you and your family. Hopefully you guys will drop one of our nuts. I see their little memes like The Shining where everyone's locked up. Here we go. Sunday, I was out at the maintenance facility for the roads crew. And this is the administrative staff. They were there Sunday afternoon working hard to make sure that our roads are clear. I wish I had all their names. Well, there's a view of the Westminster with the snow on it. They did a fantastic job. I believe that we had zero accidents. Correct me if I'm wrong, but when I last checked, they did such a wonderful job. There wasn't any accidents on the road because of their service and dedication. And here they are, you know, loading the salt up on the trucks. These guys work 24 hours straight through. I believe Bureau Chief Jim Cook keeps a cock in his office. I don't think people realize the dedication of our crews out there and what they do to keep us all safe. So I give a special thank you to those individuals. Also want to give some recognition to our new hirees in the county. To welcome them aboard. We have Michael Zekman, Woodard Distribution Superintendent at Utilities. We have Brendan O'Hara, Road Maintenance Worker Number One. Brett Stanball, Road Maintenance Worker Number One, and Cody Spade, Comprehensive Planner Number One. So welcome aboard. Welcome to the family. Also want to give mention of something I've seen in the paper this morning. About a recovery program put together in Mount Airy in my district. You know, I'll read off a little bit what they said. The need for places where those in recovery from drug and alcohol addiction can feel comfortable and safe. And take the time necessary to get their lives in order has only increased because of COVID-19. This is something that my colleagues and I have been very much aware of. And when we see nonprofits like this step up, this place in particular is called Andrea's House for Women and Children in Mount Airy. It welcomes people in who are trying to recover from their addictions, mothers trying to get and stay sober, represent an underserved population or community. The executive director is Carly Summers, and it has come forth from a nonprofit called Rainbow of Love. So if you or someone you know needs help with recovery in that area, please give them a call at 240-409-0450. And it's 240-409-0450. And before I close, I want to give a special recognition to my priority Carol to retire Colonel Rothstein. He wrote an editorial this week offering the services for veterans. No one on our board understands this issue more so than Colonel Rothstein. That just because these warriors come back from the front doesn't mean their battle has ended. They are left with emotional scars they have to handle. And so often, as my experience has, when you're dealing with a mental issue, you turn to addiction. So. He listed all the resources out there in the community to help you. So if you're a veteran and need help, just like these women and children. Please feel free to contact those resources. We are there for you and there's no shame in confronting your addictions, I well know. With that, thank you very much, Colonel Rothstein, for the service you provide.
Well said, and thank you, Eric. Commissioner Weaver.
Well, I don't know if you've looked at the latest edition of the Destination Maryland came out on Inside the Front Cutter. Carroll County Tourism has its ad out, we're centrally located. A great magazine. If you're traveling in Maryland, I think there's 165,000 copies. Going out, so to our tourism division, I want to say thank you. And yesterday, I attended the work session for the Board of Education for the operating budget. Interesting where they're going, what they're trying to do, and I will say they are really trying to. Deal with remedial education and education for our talented and gifted to take it beyond where it is. So I give them a lot of credit. They. Putting together programs the best they can in a virtual environment. It's interesting. It's going to be interesting where I think education goes in the future. The COVID has brought about changes that we may see totally good changes to our educational. System in the future. So we'll be talking about this more as we get into the budget, but I just wanted to let people know where they're going. So that's it.
Well said. Thanks, Dick. And Commissioner Wentz.
I had to zoom in there this morning. I want to, I like to play with this toy here. So, good morning, everybody. Good morning, Carroll County. I used this word last year and got in big trouble for it, but you know, I'm going to use it again. I think the groundhog is stupid. So let's just, I'll leave it at that. There's absolutely no way that he saw his shadow. It was, it was cloudy and snowing in Pennsylvania. So I'm putting it out there again. The groundhog is stupid. February is Black History Month, and I encourage everyone to, to take some time this month. To, to pay attention to the things that, that occurred, not only in the state, but also in Carroll County. I had the, the privilege of taking the Harriet Tubman tour down in Dorchester and some of those counties and it was. It was, it was an amazing experience. And if you've never done that, I encourage you to do that. I mean, they, they take you to the specific areas. Where incidents occurred there and a lot of the events occurred. But bringing it back home, there is just a ton of history in Carroll County. From the Robert Moten School to, to, there's a school in Sykesville. There's a school in my district at Bark Hill. Right over by Francis Scott Key High School, and it just doesn't stop there. There's just an amazing amount of, of history in our cemeteries as well. When you get a chance to dive into the folks that are buried in our cemeteries, it's just, and what they've accomplished, it's just amazing. So take some time this month. Make it a point to teach your, your kids, your grandkids about the tremendous, the tremendous things that occurred. As it, as it pertains to, to Black History Month. I have been attending many meetings. We'll go over those. We've been burning the midnight oil. I stopped and talked to, to our legislative liaison. Real quick this morning, and he's as exhausted as I am when it comes to all things Annapolis. It. It is just unbelievable what's going on down there, and folks have really got to pay attention to the bills. And we'll talk about that more later on. And finally, I attended my first in a while planning and zoning meeting last night. And it was good to get back with that group to see what's going on there. It's a critical, it's a critical group there. Because not only are they working on things in the present, but they set the tone for the future of our county. So. It, I feel, I feel very privileged to be able to sit there with that group again. They've got a new gentleman on there now from your district, I believe, Commissioner Rothstein. Who jumped right in and was into this, in the discussion. So I applaud the folks that are serving there. With that, I will turn it back over to you.
Thanks. And yes, Pete Lester is a great guy. He's very much involved in the community down Eldersburg. It's. He asked to be a participant on the commission, a member, and so I think we're very fortunate to have a, a community that cares and a community that stays involved. Regarding puxitoni fill, I will say 39% accuracy according to the Almanac. So I ain't a big believer of puxitoni fill personally. So.
I know you want to use the word, Ed. I can tell you want to use my word.
I'm not going there.
Good, go ahead.
Not going there. I am comfortable and Commissioner Boucher, thanks for sharing the, the DPW. We've had multiple calls in preparation for making the decisions. On whether the government should stay open, should be delayed, and it all has to do with. The skills and expertise that DPW and their entire team provides from the roads, the facilities, the fleet management, the leadership. And everybody engaged to think about this, and, and you showed the One's Life folks. They were operational nonstop for 56 plus hours. In those 56 plus hours, they covered a total of 8,000 plus or minus. Miles of roadway. To keep us clear. I've seen nothing but positive comments on social media, on, you know, emails and texts and phone calls. About how good our DPW has worked on the roads and, and the facilities. They compared it to surrounding jurisdictions and again, I'm just very proud to be a Carroll Countyan. So I appreciate you kicking that off, Commissioner Boucher. Yeah, as I mentioned, the COVID-19, it's, it's with us. The vaccines, we're going to talk about in a few minutes with Ed Singer. Is the two things that I'm really focused on are COVID-19 and DPW right now in the roads in the winter. We may have some precipitation this weekend. So let's be, continue to be prepared. With all of that said. And all the tools that we bring to the table cannot do it any better than with, without you, the community. And your engagement, your involvement means the most. Letting us know what we're doing well, where we need to adjust. To make your lives better as a Carroll Countyan is really important. That's our priority as, as a whole. So I really am pretty impressed over the last week and the actions we took. Really impressed with what everybody's shared with us this morning as well. Um, Robert, did you have anything for Prior Carol? You want to share?
Just, I agree with the two of my, my commissioners about the, the groundhog. I figure that whether he sees his shadow or not, we pretty much always have six more weeks of winter from February 2nd on. So it's a quaint little tradition and the poor thing gets ripped out of his little hidey hole. In the middle of the winter, he's probably wondering what the heck is going on. But anyway, I, we'll, we have six more weeks and we'll enjoy them and then we'll be on to spring and, and hopefully. Nice flowers and, and better weather. So that's it.
Yeah, I, I think Phil just wants to go back into his hole, but that's, that's me. Any further state directives? That we want to share at this point? Steve?
No, although I will say that last evening, the governor did give his state of the state address. And if you haven't had a chance to, to, to hear that, I encourage you to do so. But about 75% of his address last evening did pertain to pandemic. And all of the things that we are accomplishing here in Maryland as a result of that. So, so please go on there and, and, and watch that. It actually was about 20, 25 minutes. That's it. And he said some very good words on there. So, so do that. As it pertains to, to any other directives, Ed, I know you've been working very hard. You've, you've got another health department or a state call today. At the same time, I'll be on a national call. To see what we can expect there, but it might be a good segue here because I believe now we've focused a lot on vaccines and the lack thereof. So other than that, I don't think we've heard anything, Ed.
No, I appreciate it. And the call you'll be on is with National Association of Counties, which we are participating, actually an active participant in. So I appreciate that. And this is a good segue into, oh, I'm sorry, Eric, did you have something to say?
Thank you. Real quick, I just wanted to add on and show appreciation of what Commissioner Wayans mentioned about Black History Month and the heritage we have in this county. And he mentioned the cemeteries and the schools. If you're, if anyone's interested, your Board of Tourism has a brochure put together. List all those sites that Commissioner Wayans had mentioned. So if you're interested, I think you can get the brochure in the lobby or you can probably go online. And you can do your own self tour of all of our African-American history in our county. With that, thanks, Steve, for mentioning that.
No, I appreciate it. A good shout out. That, that, that's, that's important. We're going to segue into. Our Health Department, our Health Officer, Ed Singer, and as Commissioner Wayans shared. I attend a phone call every Thursday with the state and it's focused on. Mainly the vaccinations, the vaccine distribution. There is no lack of work that the state and the administration is doing from the governor on down. There is no lack of will and. Level of importance they're putting on this. The challenge is the distribution, getting it out to all the jurisdictions. One, the lack of doses that Commissioner Wayans shared, but then also how it's being distributed across the state into our counties. I never thought, and I'm going to segue this into Mr. Singer in a second, I never thought that I would be agreeing so. Animally or clearly with Montgomery County, Frederick County, Anarundel County, Howard County, Baltimore County. I mean, the leaders, we are very different in our philosophies and our approach, in our culture. But we all have been saying the exact same thing, and that is get the doses to, the doses in the vaccines to the jurisdictions, to the counties. Get them in the hands of the health officials for distribution because the most vulnerable populations are still out there not being vaccinated. And that's the 75 plus and over. We still have 10,000 plus, and that's just a piece of what's out there across the state. Plus the educators and everything else. And we're going to get into this, Ed, and almost still your thunder. But it is all of us working together and engaging with the administration to figure out how we can. Get you as many vaccines as possible to get into the arms of our community. So with that, let me hand it off to you. Unless anybody has anything else they want to share. Nope, go ahead, Ed. Thanks.
Morning Commissioners, and I'll just say that every day's been Groundhog Day since last March as far as I was concerned. And it's, it's interesting that you ended up by talking about how the big counties and the small counties are kind of united on this issue. And it's often difficult. I'm chairing the Maryland Association of Health Officers right now group. It's often difficult to come to consensus when. There's differences between what the big counties need and what the small counties need, but we're 100% together. I, I appreciate. Your support in trying to, to move things forward and get us as much vaccine as we can so we can get it to our most at-risk populations. You guys mentioned the, any new state directives, and there was one thing that came out this week that I think Bear's mentioning before we, before we get into my presentation, and that is. The restriction on restaurant hours was, was lifted as of Monday. So I want to let the community know that, that as of February 1st, the restrictions. Ordering restaurants to be closed by 10 is, is, has now been lifted. Commissioner, I want to thank you for sharing your, Commissioner Rothstein, I want to thank you for sharing your story because I, I know that this, this whole thing of quarantining and isolating. People has been very difficult. People go stir crazy when they're stuck in the house for two or three days and they buy all the. The bread and milk and toilet paper that are in the store because they've got to be stuck home for, for two or three days. But you know, we've been asking people to stay home for, for, for as much as 14 days and, and. I know how much of an inconvenience that can be to people. And Commissioner, I appreciate you setting the appropriate example and following the CDC guidelines and. And everybody in the community that's been cooperative because we know how big an inconveniences can be, but it does. Make a huge difference in, in limiting the, the spread amongst our community members. So that said, I'm going to go ahead and share my presentation and we'll just.
I apologize. Let me just interrupt you real quick is the contact tracing. Once my son and Sam and Audrey tested positive and it got put into the system, they did get notified. By Maryland for the contact tracing and they were given instructions on what to do. They were also asked, who else were they in contact with? Where, you know, and, and walk them through the entire process. So it works. And I'm very proud again of those that are. You know, out there doing this and keeping us safe. But I, I just wanted to let you know, because you and I talked about this was. You know, let's be honest about everything and let's get upfront because the only way we're going to get through this is by, by doing just that. So. Just a shout out to those guys and your entire team. Go ahead.
Yeah, and, and, and thanks for mentioning that, Commissioner, because one of the important things I want people here in Carroll County to know. Is we, we decided to take the lead on this in, in, in our jurisdiction. So a lot of the counties are deferring to the state and allowing. Things to go to a call center out in Chicago through what's, what's known as NORC, and, and we've not had the best experience when we, when we've been. Struggling to, to be able to keep up when we've had this big spike. When, when things get booted to NORC, they just don't go well. And I'm glad we're able to, to work with people here locally and, and be that local connection for people. So. Our, our contact tracers are just doing an outstanding job and it's, it's, it's not always a pleasant job because it is hard for, for people to. Stay home. It, it impacts their ability to make a living and, and, and often go to work and go to school and, and things like that that we want to be doing. So. A, a big thanks to all the community and to the contact tracers. Just sharing our, our, our normal data that we normally share, the COVID cases by week. And as you can see, it seems like we're in a little bit of a downward trend, which is, which is great, but. It's, it's also, to keep it in perspective, we're still at a level where we're just as high as we were around Thanksgiving timeframe. And you can look where we were back in. You know, back in the summertime and, and September and October, and obviously we're still not in a good place, but at least the trend seems to be in a, in a positive direction. And here's our 14-day rolling average. And again, you can notice here that we're, we're right around the same place we were around Thanksgiving timeframe, which is, which is not good. Where we're, we're trending downward, but we're still at, at a pretty high level of number of cases that are circulating in our community. This is our COVID cases in age by, by age group each week. I, I, you know, can't really say, but for some reason, the. 30 to 44 seems to be where we saw the, where we actually saw an increase while everything else is trending down this week. And. Don't have any, any reason why for that. It may just be a, a blip on the radar screen. Don't have any, any reason why for that. It may just be a, a blip on the radar screen. Hospitalizations, um, yeah, hospitalizations, the, the hospitals still seem, seems to have uh. You know, our highest level of patients that uh we've had. Since the beginning of the pandemic. Obviously, we've gotten over this big hump that we had uh along with all the cases that we, we, we had is. As, as far as hospitalizations are concerned, but the hospital's still seeing uh in the twenties of, of COVID patients that they're treating each day. And, and I want to say, one of the things that we're trying to work on. And I, and this is a word I want to get out to the community and Commissioners, anything we could do to spread this word. We, we just started thinking about, there's a, a treatment out called monoclonal antibody treatment. That we want people to, to talk to their physicians about if they test positive for COVID. And, and the reason, you know, normally this would be something uh that, that, that people would normally be talking to their own physician about and, and should be talking to their own physician about, but. You know, we, we've made access to testing pretty easy here um. At, at our test site and also at a lot of the pharmacies, you can go in and you can get a test without a physician's order. Well, the problem is people are testing positive for, for COVID. And, and I really want to encourage people, especially those people who have underlying health conditions and, and people who are over sixty-five. To talk to your doctor because um we really want to, we, we as a health department are going to work on trying to make sure that. When somebody tests positive, they know they should be talking to their doctor and they should be talking to them about whether they, whether uh. The monoclonal antibody treatment is the right thing for them. What this does is essentially helps people have, it lessens the symptoms. You've got to get to it, you'd have to get the treatment. It's an infusion, infusion treatment within the first ten days of, of, of having uh. Of having COVID, but it helps keep people out of the hospital and. You know, while we've, we've had people monitoring their, people have been monitoring their pulse ox and things like that to determine whether they. They would meet admissions criteria to the hospital and potentially need to be hospitalized. I think this is an opportunity for people to do something that's a little more proactive and, and, and being treated if you've actually contracted COVID. Talk to your physician, talk to them about a monoclonal, monoclonal antibody treatment. And, and whether it's appropriate for you or not, especially people who are over sixty-five. They all seem to fall into that category. Seems to be very effective and, and will help relieve some of the strain on our hospitals, so. That's why I kind of throw it here, in here at this point in the presentation is our hospitalizations are still. You know, while it's, while it's relatively stable and the hospital's breathing a little easier these days, we still want to keep people out of the hospital. Um, uh, hospitalizations and deaths, and obviously we're getting much better at treating people, I think, because uh. If you remember back early in the pandemic, when you were looking at the sixty-five plus, we had about an equal number of hospitalizations and equal number of deaths. Well. The hospitalization bar keeps going up, the, the death bar is not climbing nearly as, as quickly as the uh, as the hospitalization, so. You know, I'm glad that modern medicine's able to catch up with some of this, provide better treatments and we're, 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 we're better able to take care of people. Um, next slide, obviously I've said, said a lot that we're, we're, we're not out of the woods. Um, last week was our worst week for a number of community deaths that we've had since the pandemic started. We had five people living independently in the community and this, you know, this, this excludes uh long-term care facilities. Um, and, and, and that type of data, that five people in our community died last week. That's, that's terrible. And uh, you know, it's, it's not much we can do about it other than get people vaccinated and try to get through this pandemic and, and. Continue to do what we're doing with, with masks and social distancing. I, I know, you know, this has gone on for a long time, but we're going to get through this and, and there is a, a light at the end of the tunnel. Of course, here's the pyramid I've been sharing with you on a, on a regular basis. Obviously, we as a health department are still in one B. So uh it, the week of January uh thirty-first, we're continuing Phase One B. Uh, as doses allow, we, we've really focused this week. We've, we've been giving a percentage of our doses to the uh. The, the, the edu-, the education sector, but really been trying to concentrate on the uh seventy-five plus. And as we get further into one B, we're going to need to get into higher education and, and the uh critical continuity of government type of folks. So here, here's our data on the amount of vaccine we've been uh, we've been receiving, and I think uh. Commissioner, that you guys were hurt a little bit as he, as, as uh. We really got cut the week of uh January thirty-first is the amount of vaccine we were receiving, but I think it would have been worse. Had it not been for local elected officials reaching out to the governor's office and, and trying to do something about that. And uh the week of Feb-, for our doses for the week of February seventh are actually a, a little bit better. Um, twelve hundred doses, so we'll see what our allocation is for next week. Uh, the, going into the next week, but um. I guess the only thing I'd point out here data-wise is we're trying to get the doses out as quickly as we can. And the week of January twenty-fourth, the, the state's promised us a floor, a, a, a minimum of seven hundred doses per week. So we're actually trying to start to dip into our, our week, a week, into our allocations a week in advance so that we're a little bit ahead of uh. A little bit ahead of schedule, so there were sixteen hundred and seventy-one doses given in the week of uh January twenty-fourth, and that's because. We had an extra clinic uh on a Saturday and vaccinated some people with the uh, with the doses that were in the eight hundred that we were getting for the week of um. Uh, of, of the thirty-first of January. Uh, next week's going to be our busiest week. Um. We, we have uh a total of uh, I, I think um. Just trying to think the number exactly. We've got thirteen hundred first, first doses scheduled for seventy-five plus and for the education sector. And we have uh a total of fifteen hundred second doses, so we'll be administering uh. Two thousand eight hundred doses next week is, is what the plan is. Um, this data is kind of important and, and you know, Commissioners had asked, I, I know you all had asked. Kind of how we're progressing on things and that, it's, it's, it's really hard for me to uh, to tell you. Uh, how many of the people in one A got vaccinated because so many different uh groups of people vaccinated them, whether. You know, if somebody works in the city at a, at a hospital or something, they probably got vaccinated there. I could tell you how many we vaccinated and I could tell you right now, the demand of, of uh us getting calls from people who are in one A. That still haven't been vaccinated is very low. Unfortunately, I can't tell you. What the percentage is that was vaccinated versus the percentage that decided that they didn't want to be vaccinated, but. Um, yeah, estimates are that probably seventy to eighty percent of the people in one A. Have, have actually been vaccinated and, and the rest ha- have uh either declined or, or, or chosen not to, or, or not. Not able to get vaccinated for another reason, but I think we're, we're uh. There, there are going to be some stragglers that are still in one A that need to be vaccinated, but I think we've reached. Uh, at least everybody's been offered the opportunity to be vaccinated that's in this group. Um, the assisted livings and, and congregate settings, the pharmacies are starting to make progress with those. Um, the seventy-five plus population, so I think there's. You know, while we haven't reached all these people yet and we want to get to them as quickly as we can, we're beginning to make some progress. Um, so there, there's an estimated uh two thousand six hundred and ten people in that age group that have been vaccinated. Uh, nine hundred and ninety-six of those were vaccinated by the Carroll County Health Department last week. The remainder of that number is uh. People who are in the long-term care facilities that were vaccinated through the pharmacy program. So we're, we're at a point where we've vaccinated roughly twenty-five percent of that seventy-five plus population, which. You know, that's, that's making a little bit of progress. We, we uh, you know, we aren't as, obviously as far as we'd like to be. We'd like to have them all vaccinated by now, but. But we're at least moving along, and out of the eight hundred doses that we, we received for this week, there are five hundred um seventy-five plus that are scheduled. At the uh South Carroll Senior Center this week. And um I had a lot of discussion with your Public Works folks and Emergency Management folks about. You know, us moving these clinics around the county and while it's not easy and, and it, it's really a heavy lift right now because. As Commissioner Rossstein pointed out, the Public Works folks are dealing with snow and. Snow removal and all that. They're also supporting us in our clinics and, and uh. Citizen Services and Rec Parks are providing us some people and we've got all kinds of volunteers and. So, so it's, it's uh, we, we think that it's important to be able to reach each part of the county. Um, next week, we're going to be going to Tony Town and, and folks are beginning to register. Um, people out that way today. For the clinic that'll be out there next week, and then we're going to move on to uh Mount Airy the week after that. And the goal is to, to hit the uh Hampstead Manchester area the following week. So we, we're also going to give our, our second doses at those same locations when, when that time comes. Um, and then we're giving some thought as to whether or not we would do a second round when we get to the sixty-five plus population. Uh, to hit all those senior centers again, and, and again, it's a lot of effort on everybody's part and, and. You know, it, it's uh, it's a lot of hard work to, to, to go to multiple locations. It's easy to uh. A lot of counties are just having them, having, having their clinics in, in one location and trying to get the uh people to come to them. We're having some discussion about whether getting around once is going to be enough and then we would try to use uh transportation assets to get people to. Uh, a centralized location and maybe we'd run uh clinics in one or two places, but uh. But right now, we are going to hit each, each senior center location in the county. And we're going to reach out to people who are in those zip codes and try to, try to get to them and make it as convenient for them as possible. The other thing is, is that the um, unfortunately, the state keeps trying to drive things from the state level, and I think we have pretty good plans here. But it's been put upon your Citizen Services Department to uh, to try to figure out plans for um. For, for large congregate living uh elderly communities and um, I actually think we're reaching this population anyway. But uh Celine and I are talking about how we're going to um. Try to figure out how many people are in these locations that need to be vaccinated and the state's asking them to focus, focus on one of these a week and. We're talking about whether we might work with Life Bridge uh in conjunction with them or in conjunction with pharmacies. To try to uh, if there's, you know, a hundred and fifty people or something that need to be reached in a certain location. Uh, sending a mobile team out to them. Uh, there, there's a lot of ideas we have about how that might be done, but uh. There was a um, a memo that came out from the uh, from the Secretary of uh Health and the Secretary of Aging. Uh, directing the, the counties to, to do certain things and we're trying to figure, figure out how that fits in with our plans. I, I kind of. Almost think that it's better for, for them to let us do our own planning at the local level, but we're going to comply with the directive and, and figure out how to best do that. Um, when the education sector, we vaccinated two hundred and twenty-four people in conjunction with the school system um yesterday. So we're up to a total of uh two thousand three hundred and twenty-eight people that have been vaccinated in the education sector. And um I think that's, that's actually um about thirty-five percent. It's thirty-two percent of this part, portion of one B. And it's thirty-five percent of the uh education sector, so we're making progress there as well. Um, we were directed to add higher education this week to the uh, to the one B group. So we're going to be figuring out where they fit in. I um. Sent uh emails to both presidents of the Community College and the uh, and the McDaniel. And asked them to come up with a list and an estimate. I, I threw a ballpark figure in there of five hundred people. I really don't know how many it is, but we're uh. We're, we're going to be needing to vaccinate them as well. Um, one other thing to say about the education sector and it's that this is just not teachers. It includes uh instructional assistants. Um, it includes the bus drivers, um, oth- other support workers that are involved in the school and the education system, so. It's, it's um, it's actually a little more difficult for us to track sometimes because uh. You know, it's easy. I can, I can pick out all the teachers we vaccinated, but we're, we're also trying to figure out. You know, making sure that we've hit those transportation workers especially because they've got to drive the, the kids on the bus every day and um. And all the support staff, the, the, the educational assistants, classroom assistants and. And even the uh food service workers that are working in the schools are, are part of this group, so. Um, we're getting there and uh we're making progress. And you, you know, the, the total of seven thousand and eighty-six people that I've got over there, that, that's the total number. You know, if we figure that only eighty percent of those are going to be vaccinated, maybe the real number's closer to uh. The, the fifty-five hundred or six thousand. I, I, I don't know exactly what that's going to be. But we'll, essentially the way, unfortunately, the way we're figuring out when we're through these groups is when. When there's no longer a demand, that's when we, we know that it's time to move on to the next group. Um, in Phase One C, there's an estimated uh one thousand three hundred and twenty-two people that have been vaccinated. Four hundred and eight of those have been vaccinated by the Health Department. And that's not because we're focused on people who are sixty-five to seventy-four. It's because they fall into one of these other categories. Some of them are probably school teachers or daycare providers or, or work in uh, work as first responders and, and they're, they're in that age group. But they're also in one of these other groups in, in one B, so some of these groups overlap. While we're not focusing on that sixty-five to seventy-four age group yet, we'll get there once we get through e- everybody in one B. Um, we, we have vaccinated uh one thousand three hundred and twenty-two of those folks, and there's also. Thirty-six people vaccinated in this uh One C group according to our, our data from uh. From, from, from our vaccination data, you know, that probably fit in one of these other groups up, up here. They're, they're probably seventy-five plus. And, and working in one of these sectors. So we're trying to uh provide you as uh up-to-date and accurate data as we can as far as the progress we're making. So that you kind of have an idea where we stand. Spent a lot of time on that slide, but I think it was really important. Again, uh, most up-to-date information related to our vaccine efforts and any information about uh vaccinations. Go to our website. Uh, please, if you know somebody who's seventy-five, I was talking to, we've got a um. We've got peer support facilitators who work with a lot of the disadvantaged uh population and whatnot, and one of our peers was talking to me this morning. And people are assuming just because you have an underlying health condition or something else, you're automatically going to be signed up for a vaccine. If you haven't called the Health Department or, or, or gotten on our list through our website. Please do so, get signed up. We want to be able to reach everybody. There, there's still people out in the community that think that somebody's going to automatically reach out to them. We don't know where everybody is or who everybody is. We've done our best to, to reach out through lists that we have to reach everybody, but. If you, if you don't know that you're on a list, you know, you can call our call center and we can verify whether you're on the list or not. And if you're not, we can add you, get you added to the list, but we want to make sure. That everybody who's seventy-five and older has an opportunity to get vaccinated before we move on to the next category, so. Please, please reach out to us. We'll do the best that we can, and I know it's frustrating that people are having to wait weeks. But it's better to uh wait weeks and get vaccinated than, than to get left behind and. We get into Phase One C and then it gets more difficult for us to, to get you in and, and, and get you vaccinated. So I'll stop there and uh answer any uh questions that the Commissioners might have this morning.
Really well said, Ed, and I appreciate all the information. And the continuing uh persistence that you and your team have. The one thing uh you didn't share, but it's important for the community to, to recognize is. That you're not settled and neither are any of us with the numbers that, you know, we have right now, the amount of doses. Uh, that you're receiving. You're requesting a whole lot more than what you're receiving. Um, and you know, it's not that you're settling, you're dealing with what the numbers you have, but uh. But it's important that we're not, you know, just asking for seven hundred or just asking for twelve, thirteen hundred. And while everybody else is asking for a whole lot more. The other piece is, and you shared this with me and I think others, you have the ability to vaccinate. A whole lot more with the team that you have, correct? If you can uh talk just a minute or two on those two things.
So I, I think, I, I, I talked to my team yesterday, actually, again, and just said, hey. If we actually get the amount of vaccine, I'm, I'm asking for five thousand doses a week and, and my, my thought is and, and just uh. I, I think that would be about our capacity because if I had to give five thousand first doses. We'd have to give five thousand second doses at some point too, so we'd be talking about the Health Department uh. In conjunction with, you know, we, we've got a lot of partners in this. It's, it's the school nurses, it's the uh. Volunteers and Volunteer Maryland that we're pulling from. A lot of people from the community have stepped up. And your staff have stepped up to help us, help us with this, but we think. We could easily run two vaccination sites and possibly even a third. We do get to limiting factors in. I got to have a certain number of qualified people to uh manage the safety and the chain of the vaccine and everything else at each clinic. So two's probably a, an, an ideal number for us, but we think we can put, we, we know we can put. A thousand people a day through one of our clinics at one of the senior centers and. You know, if we, if we get to the point where we're getting five thousand doses a week. We'll probably open up two kind of centralized sites as our, as our regular basis of operation. And uh, and operate from there and we'll, we'll get a thousand people a day through there and. And we'll continue to do that as long as we can get vaccine. Now, as we get into one B and one C, as I've said, the, the pharmacies will become a very important part of that. Because they, they do a great job during flu season, vaccinating anybody who wants a flu vaccine. And if we have enough vaccine that anybody who wants it can get it, eh, hey, that, that's where, that's where it should come, but right now. You know, we've got the ability to do this. We've got the ability to reach the right people and it, it needs to be prioritized. But right now, you know, we've got the ability to do this, we've got the ability to reach the right people and it, it needs to be prioritized. And it's really hard, uh, for people who don't have computer access and don't have, um, email addresses and whatnot to sign up on a, on the Giants website or, and, and I don't want to, you know, I don't want to discount that they're not going to be an important part of this, but it's in, they don't, they don't have people to assist people, help them navigate the system. If, if, uh, if, if they want to get vaccinated at Giant or at a commercial pharmacy or something like that. And they don't have the ability to reach out to, to people who don't have technology and get them signed up. So we have the capacity to do it, we're asking for more doses and, uh, we appreciate the help of all the community partners. The, the health department can't do this on our own and there's a lot of people who are helping. And I, I certainly would not want to miss, uh, thanking everybody who, who's assisting us out there. So, um, it's, it's, it's quite a collaborative effort and really appreciate the support we're getting out of everybody. It's a community effort, it's a local effort and, and that's, that's, you know, that's the way this is. Uh, the health departments are required by CDC to have plans, the mass vaccinate and mass dispense. And it's not anything that's ever planned on the state level. It's a, it's a local effort and it has to be, or else you're not going to reach the right populations at the right time.
Ed, you're looking at a minimum of five months to even get through the county. Is that roughly accurate?
Well, Commissioner, it, it, I, I don't know how accurate that is. It depends on how, how quickly some of these other vaccines become available. Because if we can get through, you know, this phase one B and one C, and we can start vaccinating the general population and more vaccine becomes available, I don't know what the answer to that is. It depends on, eh, on, on, on the supply that's available. If, if supply becomes readily available and it becomes available in just about any pharmacy, we could get through this a lot quicker. But right now, the limitation is on the amount of supply that's coming out. And, and I really can't, you, you know, there are other, um, there are other, uh, vaccine, um, distributors who are on the horizon of getting approval. I don't know how soon that'll happen and I don't know how much they'll be able to produce. All I can say is what we have right now and, you know, i- i- it is going to be several months at least. I was hoping by summertime, we might have a good, you know, sixty, seventy percent of the population vaccinated. But, uh, we're going to have to wait and see. I, I, I don't think there are any guarantees there.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
Uh, just one question, Ed. I had, uh, a couple folks reach out to me and I, listen, I appreciate your help yesterday because you're talking about the seventy-five and over. Uh, some of those folks are, do have challenges. Uh, a lot of them don't even have a computer. So, uh, so I appreciate your help on a couple of them yesterday. Uh, a couple reached out to me also, uh, because I know the state is opening up a couple mass vaccination centers, I, I believe, beginning tomorrow. Uh, they can, they're, they're welcome, even if they live here to, to try to register at those locations as well, correct?
Yep, uh, that, that's, that's my understanding. Um, however, I, I hate to say this, I, I've been asking, I don't even know how you register for those sites at this point. So, um, we, we're trying to put those resources on our webpage. So that if people really want to try to chase after a vaccine someplace different while, while they're waiting for us to get to them on the list, we're, we're trying to make those resources available. But I'm, I, I do understand that they're going to be opening these sites and that you will need an appointment, but I'm not sure how you get an appointment at this point. And we'll continue to look into that and we'll try to, uh, provide a link on our website once we, once we figure it out.
Mr. Singer, I really appreciate that chart you show listing the quality of people in each one of the categories and how many have been vaccinated. That's helpful for us and the public and understand where we're at and what we're up against. So as always, you do a fantastic job and we appreciate what you're doing.
Okay, again, um, I'll be on the call this afternoon at, uh, twelve-thirty. Uh, with I expect, um, Secretary Schrader, Deputy Secretary in the, all the other jurisdictions. Uh, getting the update on what's happening, uh, around the state. Um, as Commissioner Wans shared, if you get the opportunity to listen to a state of the state, um, our governor did talk, uh, most of the talk dealing with the pandemic and the concerns that, uh, we have across the state. So Ed, any parting thoughts and, uh, we'll let you go. You're muted.
Sorry, I lost my, uh, I lost my, you know, when you're dealing with multiple screens, I, I took the presentation down and I lost where, where you were. Now, I really don't have any other thoughts. I just, uh, again, want to thank the community for all they're doing to try to limit the spread as we get, uh, vaccine out there and try to get through this and, and hopefully see the light at the end of the tunnel. So I, I, I'm looking forward to hopefully, uh, maybe we can go watch a football game the next year, uh, or, or, or something like that. And, and, you know, high school sports and things like that, that everybody seems to take a lot of enjoyment in and, and, and and a lot of the things that we've missed out for the past year, we want to get back to those. But, uh, you know, we're not there yet, but at some point in time, hopefully we'll get there.
Oh, Mr. Singer, I'm surprised your fellow veterans didn't mention your army tie. It looks very nice.
So I got this from, uh, one of your, one of your people who's been a stalwart on your, uh, Larry Burbank, uh, got this for me. And, uh, Larry's a, a local veteran who was a, a helicopter pilot and, uh, I think the Vietnam or Korea, I, I don't remember. But anyway, great guy and, and very involved with your veterans council and, uh, you know, I'll give a shout out to Larry because he's just a wonderful person and he's the one who hooked me up with the tie. So thanks, Commissioners. You all have a good day.
You have a great day and you're right, Larry, uh, Burbank is a rock star in our community. Okay, let's follow up, uh, Mr. Fowler, Mike, you on?
I am on. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning. The floor is yours.
All right. Well, we're, uh, we're about three weeks in to the session at this point. Uh, the, the floor sessions still remain sporadic. Uh, for example, there's, there's nothing today. There are sessions in both chambers tomorrow. The House has announced their calendar for the remainder of the month and they've got five dates slated for floor sessions. And several of those will be extended sessions. So they're really going to start getting into the business of, uh, of consideration and debate on these bills. Uh, yesterday, the, the governor's budget, uh, was presented by Secretary Brinkley to the Mako Legislative Committee. Uh, laid out, uh, the governor's thinking and, uh, and, and how he's, uh, he's set up the budget. He did get a couple of questions from the floor about the impacts to local governments. And, and as expected, his answer, uh, is that that needs to be taken up with the legislature. I mean, that's the, uh, that's the point of the Burfa bill. So we're, uh, we, I say we as a, as a body, um, of counties will be working through Mako to address some of those impacts that have been identified. Of course, his, is, his other bill associated with COVID relief is, uh, is in play. It has passed the Senate with some amendments, uh, goes over to the House. And that's, I think, where the real back and forth will, uh, will take place. So that House version is being heard in ways and means today. So Mako's concerns will be, uh, brought forward by Mako staff today. Uh, also the legislative committee took, uh, positions on five, again, subtraction modification bills. We've discussed these where, uh, by, by making a subtraction modification, there's an impact to local revenues as well. And Mako typically opposes those bills, not the substance of the bill, but simply that it's a state action. Uh, it should be done as a state tax credit, which would leave your, your revenues intact. That's, that's, uh, the state taking an action that impacts you directly. Uh, the glyphosate ban, uh, was heard yesterday in the House committee. And, uh, the sponsor agreed to amend, uh, agriculture out of the bill. So it would pertain only to state and local governments. Uh, there was strong opposition, the Farm Bureau, uh, DNR, surprisingly. Uh, they, they use this for their integrated vegetation management programs. A number of local governments do that as well. Also, there's a, a bill in, uh, that you find interesting. There's a, a goal, the, the bill sets a goal to preserve over a million acres of productive agricultural land by 2030. And it does that through a combination of MAF, Rural Legacy, uh, Maryland Environmental Trust and, and local programs. So that hearing is scheduled for, uh, the seventeenth next week. So I'll keep you apprised of how that, that bill moves through, uh, the process. Spent a lot of time last week talking about the Climate Solutions Act, uh, that was heard last week. There really wasn't any opposition. The Realtors came in as opposed, but kind of modified their position. They're really only concerned about the energy efficiency standards applied to commercial buildings. That the commercial real estate market is pretty challenged right now. It will continue to be, I suspect, uh, as a lot of employers determine that some of their staff can be working remotely, that some of this, uh, real estate stock may be vacant for, for the foreseeable future. So that was the only concern brought forward, which I thought was interesting. And we talked about some of the politics of this, that since this is a bill that the Senator, uh, really wants, that when it moves to the House, perhaps that's where some horse trading begins. So I don't suspect the bill will, will go forward in its current form. I think there's, there's going to be some, obviously some changes to that. Uh, on the education front, uh, House Bill eight ninety-four is enabling legislation. I think, uh, Commissioner Wans may have mentioned this in an earlier session, um, that would, would enable a, uh, certain units within, uh, a community college to organize. Um, the House version is scheduled for a hearing on the eleventh and, uh, obviously, excuse me, not on the eleventh. Um, not, doesn't have a, uh, hearing scheduled yet. Uh, the only thing I can tell you about that is similar bills have been put forward in the past. They've not moved, uh, but there's a lot of, uh, momentum behind this from labor this year. So we'll be taking a close look at that one. On the election front, uh, we've got Senate Bill twenty-nine put forward, being heard today. Uh, this is a, this really changes the game. It would require mail-in ballots sent to every registered voter. You would be required to have the same number of polling places as you did in the 2020 election, but they would be spaced geographically because we are going to have a mail-in and an in-person, uh, voting regime. So any voter from any district would be able to walk into any polling place and cast a vote. So how, so we have to, we have to sort of figure out how all of that works with the mail-in versus the walk-in and, and how you don't have double voting. Uh, so that's going to be one that I think gets a lot of scrutiny. Uh, on the public health side, uh, Senate Bill sixty-seven would authorize EMS personnel to deliver COVID vaccinations under certain, uh, certain criteria such as being supervised by, by doctors and so forth. Uh, it did pass the Senate unanimously, it's an emergency bill. So when it passes the House, it gets enacted, uh, immediately. It does sunset in 2024, so obviously intended to be a temporary measure to get us through this, this COVID battle. Uh, Senate Bill six forty-five is a, a proposal by the champion of the nine-one-one, uh, changes that we saw last year, Senator Kagan. Um, she seems to be now concerned that the current procurement practices for purchases that go before the, uh, the nine-one-one emergency services board that are over 500,000 need to be scrutinized more heavily for, uh, for their MBA participation, uh, requirements. And all of the nine-one-one, uh, directors are very opposed to this. It's, it's a tough situation because Senator Kagan has really been a, a friend to the counties on the nine-one-one issue and, and other issues too. So it, it appears that she's gotten the message that this is problematic. Uh, specifically, it's, it's about the way the, the procurement is done, where one county takes the lead and the other county's piggyback on that contract. But they're still, at the, at the local level, they're still going through the requirements for MBE and such. So they think it's, it's adds an additional layer of bureaucratic review and delay. So we're going to be keeping an eye on that, but Mako is also going to carry that, that issue forward on our behalf. So that brings us to, uh, to a subject that I want to go in, in much more detail, uh, today. And that's this issue of police reform and accountability. So we knew that this was going to be a, a very significant issue that was going to move forward in some way this session. So it's going to pass in some form. And there are a couple of bills, well, several bills in play that address the issues of the law enforcement officers' bill of rights, uh, body cameras, use of force and, uh, Public Information Act requests. So there are two major bills that address this, one in each chamber. And they both repeal the law enforcement officer bill of rights. And as you know, that's a set of protocols, protections, if you will, process that outlines how a police officer, uh, will be treated uh, for a, a complaint of, uh, of misconduct. So the major goal is, is making misconduct charges and any subsequent disciplinary process or just the review in general to make that more transparent to the public. So the first bill in the Senate is Senate Bill six twenty-seven. Uh, Law Enforcement Officers' Bill of Rights repeal and procedures for discipline. So this is a repeal and a replacement sponsored by Senator Carter in Baltimore City. Uh, it, it deals really exclusively with misconduct and review and discipline. Um, it also determines what information can be released publicly, outlines the process that's going to be followed for a complaint. It does leave enforcement of the process mostly up to the police chiefs. It also allows the county who wants to create an oversight body to take that process under their control to do that. So it's, it's enabling in that way. The other larger bill that comes from, it's introduced by the speaker. It comes from the work that came out of the work group over the summer. The work group to address police reform and accountability. So this is much more highly specific on structure and process. Talks about limits on the use of force, put some limits on serving warrants. Uh, deals with increased training of police officers, mental health evaluations, implicit bias training. Uh, it's the, it mandates body cameras, which the other bill does not. It gives you till January first, 2025. So it's not specific on the subjects that, that float around that about storage, um, about record keeping and that sort of thing. It simply says basically you have a couple of years to figure this all out. It has a, uh, a condition in there to pay full tuition for four-year degrees in criminal law, criminology, or criminal justice, uh, as long as the individual serves at least five years as a police officer in the state during the eight-year period following their graduation. It creates an independent state agency to investigate use of force incidents. That's, it's comprised of sworn officers and citizens, and that would apply for incidents of death or serious injury. And that group would then report to the state's attorney to determine whether the officer should be charged. It establishes a trial board that has to be comprised of at least one-third citizens and the officer has the right to the trial board, uh, prior to discipline. Now, in this bill, there's a county role in the process. The county needs to, uh, convene an independent agency to investigate citizen complaints. It establishes what's called an administrative charging committee comprised of the county attorney, who becomes the chair, the director of internal affairs for the respective police force, uh, representative from the public defender's office, the designee of the state's attorney's office, and one civilian. So following investigative, so the complaint comes in following an investigation by the sheriff department, those files are then forwarded to the those files are then forwarded to the charging committee. They determine whether to charge the officer based on on certain criteria. And if it is chargeable, they recommend discipline based on the policy that's in effect. And that goes back to the chief, or in our case here, the sheriff. And they actually have the ability to request subpoenas if they need more information. So this, this creates a couple of significant issues for a county like Carroll County, and frankly, for any county that is, that has a an elected sheriff. I think the bill was was put together with the mindset that police forces in the state have a police chief who is appointed by the executive, either the county executive or in a municipality, the mayor, and then confirmed by the council. In a county where you have commission and you have a sworn, excuse me, you have an elected sheriff, you're now setting up a conflict here where you would have oversight over another duly elected official. It also requires in this, this administrative charging committee that two of those members must be from the jurisdiction jurisdiction where the offense occurred. So it specifically mentions about the county has to create this charging committee, but is it's silent on whether a municipality has to create this committee. So what that means is you become the charging committee for the municipalities in your county. And because the way that committee is comprised, the citizen needs to be from the jurisdiction where the incident occurred. And the member from Internal Affairs needs to be from the jurisdiction or the force where this occurred. So you'd have to sort of reconstitute this committee depending on where that complaint came in from. So question is what to do about this? Mako is in a tough position because the, the, as you can see, the the sort of conflicts and tensions in the bill. So in terms of taking a position, very difficult to take a position. Number one, you can't oppose the bill. The the bill is going to move forward. Opposing it takes you out of the conversation. So what they intend to do is provide the committees with a a letter of information that lays out some of these challenges that we see. That will keep Mako at the table. The the executive director has already gotten a commitment from leadership that Mako will remain in this discussion. So this is sort of the the beginning of this. Commissioner Wance was part of that discussion yesterday. Clearly, you'll happy having discussions with the sheriff as well. I think the police chiefs and the sheriffs will be, and the FOP will kind of be taking the lead on most of the substance of these bills, which which go to process and procedures and discipline and that sort of thing, since the chiefs are going to have the overwhelming responsibility on that. But I wanted to point up these these challenges that are specific to you. And and that that's kind of where I'm going to end today, because I think you you may have some questions or want to have some discussion about this.
Hey, Mike, I appreciate, I do have one question. I've seen on social media discussion about SROs. And, you know, is there legislation to get rid of SROs in the schools at this point? Or where where is this bubbling up from?
Yeah, the, there's a proposal that the SROs, and I think there are a couple of bills that address this. One says they they really can't be police officers in the sense that they carry weapons and they have the ability to arrest. There's also, I think, sort of proposals that that say we really should change that into more mental health and counselor type of people as opposed to police officers. And you're going to see a a range of opinion on that. I think in the more urban jurisdictions, they have concerns about that. And I think they're they're the ones that are more interested in reducing the the policing and the optics of policing schools, where other jurisdictions are quite comfortable with with how it's been to date. It it's interesting that, I think, two or three years ago in the session is when this all came about as a result of several school shootings, and everyone was all in on the SRO concept. And now, a couple of years later, after some of these social justice and equity issues have come up, that there's some rethinking on that. So I could get you more details on the specific bills and exactly how they lay that out, but that's sort of the concept that's being looked at.
Okay, I appreciate it because, you know, I'm not so concerned about opinions, especially on social media, because it's just a bunch of group think, in my, you know, my view. I just want to know if there's any traction that we need to be concerned about when it comes to SROs in the county, or is this just a lot of talk right now to, you know, for for legislators or others just to thump their chest on their on their views and personal opinions? That's all.
Yeah, I think it is something to be concerned about and taken seriously, yes.
Okay, and then the only other comment is, I still, and and Commissioner Wance knows this, I just don't like the rule that when we disagree with something, we are not at the table anymore as far as Mako's concerned. So you can't say no, because then you lose the opportunity to voice an opinion afterwards. But that's, that's my view. Commissioner Wance, what are what are your thoughts on this whole police reform piece?
Where where do I begin? As Mike said, we had some long discussions yesterday. We also had some lengthy discussions Monday evening during the Rural County Coalition, because this specifically affects the rural counties, as Mike said, more than it does the the urban counties. You know, I, this, this, all of these, we're going to have to really pay attention here because the the potential was there to pit elected official against elected official. Because, you know, as Mike alluded to, we could very well go up against the sheriff on some of these things, and he's elected just like we are. So, you know, forming this committee, I don't know how Tim Burke feels about being the chairman of a committee that's going to look at somebody who's who's got a problem, one of our police officers. I, well, I can pretty much tell you what Tim Burke says, but he can tell you himself, Tim's on here.
I'll never get another traffic ticket again.
Yeah, and that, and that's make, that, that's, you know, that's talking about it lightly, but, you know, a couple of the counties said, well, we've got, I think Queen Anne's, when I was talking to colleagues down there, said, well, we've got the Centerville Police Department. And what do we do about them? Well, okay, good for them. We've got six municipality police departments that we're going to have to take a lead in. And I'm in no way wanting, as a commissioner, to do any of that. It's just that, that's really complex, and we're getting into a place. Listen, you all know how difficult it is to fill the, fill these boards and commissions now with people. Can you imagine filling one like that? So there, there's a lot in these bills. Kudos to Mike because he's, he's really, Mike takes a good lead there at Mako, but the discussions are lengthy as to, you know, what it's going to, how it's going to affect the rural counties, and we're we're doing all that we can. To your comment, Ed, about, you know, opposing, we do that at Mako a good bit when we know that the bill's not going anywhere, and the staff at Mako are outstanding. And they they know exactly, you know, what what's going to happen there. If they feel like we need that seat, we'll, we'll do it, you know, support with amendments or support with a letter. So we, we, so that that seat remains there. But that's a good point into a segue of of saying that because this session is so wacky this year, it's good to have the Mako's of the world to keep track of what everything is happening down there, because Mako remains very powerful. And I'll, I'll end. I don't know if I answered your question, Ed, but we're all over these police reform bills. I'm going to meet with Mike later on this afternoon so that we can get on the same page to to go at this, and then we'll pass on more information to you guys. But I'll end with, you know, we're not down there face to face, which is a problem. A lot of deals get struck in the hallways down there. I've struck several myself over the last six years, and we don't have that. But with that said, for those that want to testify on bills, you can still do that. The 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 challenge is, it it was three days in advance. I think they've got two days in advance now, don't they, Mike? Yeah, so we're down to two, but you have to, you have to register to speak two, two days in advance of a bill. And then you're not guaranteed that you're going to be chosen to to testify, but you can at least get your your name in there i- if you want to testify on these bills. So it's kind of the same, but it's really different down there, because you just don't have that opportunity. That SRO bill is still floating around, that's in the House. And Mike said he, we'll, we'll get more information on that. But what it does is it takes the monies that was set aside for SROs and throws it over to mental health experts. So it takes, it takes that money, eliminates that position, but creates positions for pupil personnel workers and and, you know, guidance counselor positions and that kind of thing. So very troubling, and it's still there. It hasn't been killed yet, so we're going to have to keep an eye on that. A lot going on with police reform, Ed, to your, to your question, a lot.
I, I appreciate, I appreciate the, as always, the insight. Yeah, I think everybody knows my feelings about SROs. They're doing a great job in our community. The sheriff continues to highlight the value of the SROs. CCPS, the schools, continue to highlight the value of the SROs as community leaders within the schools, as mentors, as also the force protection that they do provide. So I I'm just curious, because I saw it on social media, and that that's all.
Yeah, you know, what, you know, one, one, one could argue, Ed, that SROs are are helping with mental health. I mean, we've heard, we've heard cases here in in the county where a student has has been challenged with something. And, you know, the SRO has has reached out to them or spoken with them and essentially done that that job of helping that student or that 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 child through a difficult situ- situation. So, you know, I, they they might be better suited than what somebody sitting behind a desk in a tie would do, because plus it it creates that sorely needed a connection of law enforcement to our young people these days. And eliminating that is just, is very troubling.
This is true community policing, where the police officer actually has people come up to him, talk to him, confide in him, help through everything. I, yeah, one program we've had that's really successful, and they want to eliminate it. It's troubling, really troubling.
Mr. Fowler, thanks, as always. You articulated a very good position here in briefing us. I think Commissioner Wance made some very good points. I think it'd be good if we had some sort of briefing or position paper from your sheriff, because he has far greater knowledge on the subject than us as far as the police reform and SROs. It'd be nice if he, if he hasn't put something together for us to advocate for him, if he could. So I'd love to see what his talking points are and how we can support him on that. And I I think Commissioner Wance made a new buzzword, wacky. We'll add that to your list of absurd, that was a good word, thank you.
I think that goes with Speed Racer or something like that. But, yeah, I think what we got is a pretty unified message from us as Board of Commissioners regarding the value of SROs that we have seen in our personal experiences. And, yeah, I'm hundred percent, you know, with you, both or all, regarding our SROs and the value that they provide for our students. And, yeah, walking the beat, you know, the hallways does a lot of value with somebody in uniform when it comes to a kid, somebody to look up to. So there's a lot of value with our SROs, okay. Again, my personal opinion, but also from the experiences that I've seen. Mike, again, I appreciate all the work that you're doing and keeping us apprised, along with the community apprised of actions and activity going on in Annapolis every Thursday. And I know how responsive you are to all of us on a daily basis. So thank you for all that you're doing. Okay, let's move on to our action items. And we got, I think, Ms. Stickle, there you are, Ms. Celine, and you're going to talk to us about FY two thousand and twenty-one, Carroll County Bureau of Housing, the annual plan, correct? And Danielle? And Paul?
Okay, all right. Good morning, commissioners. I'm here before you this morning with Danielle Yates, who is our bureau chief of housing and community development, and also Paul Moffett, who is our manager of our, our program manager for housing as well. As the Board of County Commissioners, you are the governing body for our Housing and Community Development's Public Housing Authority. Every five years, we're required to develop an administrative plan that guides our Public Housing Authority. And that includes incorporation of all federal, state, and local regulations and policies surrounding section eight housing. Each year, we review that plan, and we we update it and make recommendations for additions or changes needed to streamline the Housing Choice Voucher Program and ultimately improving it for the delivery of the program to our citizens here in Carroll County. And I'm going to turn it over to Danielle to talk about our Housing Choice Voucher Program, the vouchers that we have, and then also the recommended changes that we have to our five-year plan so that we can update our annual plan for FY twenty-one.
Good morning, commissioners. As Celine noted, we are here today to review the recommended changes to our administrative plan for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one. Our Housing Choice Voucher Program currently administers seven hundred and seventy-three tenant-based vouchers. And we just wanted to draw to your attention, there was a typo on the briefing paper, it said seven seventy-eight, it is seven seventy-three. The breakdown of those vouchers is five hundred and twenty-four regular tenant-based vouchers. The remainder are specialized vouchers consisting of one hundred non-elderly disabled vouchers, one hundred and nine mainstream vouchers, fifteen Veterans Affairs supportive housing vouchers, and twenty-five family unification program vouchers. As noted, we have seven recommended adjustments to terms and policies related to our Section Eight Housing Assistance Program. If you would look at the chart that we have provided, you will see that in Chapter Six, which is income and subsidy determination, we have three clarifications just to current policy. Within chapters nine and eleven, we have two accommodations, which were for the public health emergencies, just pertaining to virtual inspections and recertifications by mail. In Chapter Eleven, we are implementing a streamlined recertification for families with fixed incomes over a three-year period. Fixed income sources, just so you know, include social security payments, pensions, annuities, and retirement plans. This process would affect approximately one hundred and fifty of our families. Ninety-nine percent of those families are individuals over the age of sixty-two, which receive only social security benefits. While we still complete a verification of income and expenses annually for two, years two and three of this process, it's just a less extensive recertification process for those folks. We have been awarded an additional one hundred and twenty-four mainstream and BASH vouchers in the past two years. By implementing this streamlined process, we are able to maintain the current workload for each of our housing specialists without having to add additional staff to administer these vouchers. The final change that we have is within Chapter Seventeen, which is special housing types. We are changing our current policy of not assisting single-room occupancy to assisting due to a reasonable accommodation. This is an adjustment that we need to make to ensure that we are following our federal guidelines for HUD housing quality standards, which are in twenty-four CFR ninety-two, nine eighty-two. which are in 24 CFR 92, 982, excuse me, point four zero one. Would you have any additional questions that we can answer for you regarding these recommended adjustments?
Danielle, thanks. The, you mentioned 124 vouchers. Increase? It was an increase to 124 or 124 additional vouchers?
It was 124 additional vouchers that we were awarded over the past two years. It was the 109 mainstream and the 15 Veterans Affairs supportive housing vouchers.
Thank you, Ms. Yates. Can, can you explain or clarify an example of how Chapter 17 revision would work? So I can have a better understanding about the disability. Like what motivated that?
So it, it is a requirement. We cannot disallow it. So under a reasonable accommodation, which would be something that myself and our program manager would review, if it would meet those standards, we could allow it. But the way it works on single occupancy, there is an extensive mathematical equation that would even determine the subsidy that we would pay on behalf of that individual since it's only a single room and it's not a full unit.
Yeah. So basically it's a reform procedure that's being addressed by experience from you guys?
Yes.
Going back to those vouchers for a second, 15 veteran vouchers, is that? Has that been sufficient over the couple of years or are we looking to get more? What, what's your sense on that plus the, the total number? Are we at the right place?
So we would like to see more, but this is a process that we work with the Veterans Local Office in Baltimore with. So they have to be in agreement to actually administer the case management that goes along with these vouchers. And they actually do the referrals to our agency. So at this point with the 15, that is all that the VA is willing to, I guess, um, to, to, to provide case management services for. So I think they have restrictions in just the amount of caseload management they can handle. Would we like to see more? I'm sure Celine can agree. We absolutely would like to see additional BASH vouchers be administered. It's like I said, again, it's just, we have to work in conjunction with our local VA office to get that referral and approval.
So when you're saying local VA office, you're talking about federal, not American. So if there is something like this that you want to advocate for more, leverage us and leverage, you know, us with our relationship with MDVA, you know, and the secretary there to then say, hey, we're doing it and we're doing it well. These vouchers would not be wasted and we know how to use them. You know, we, we have proven processes in place and, you know, one, just highlighting them, but two, continuing to further develop them, I think is important. So to take a look at that. And if there's something that you'd like to leverage through the administration, through the Maryland administration to USVA, you know, let's, let's come up with a plan. Okay?
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. And thank you for all the work that y'all are doing.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
I've got, I've got some, some questions. The seven adjustments that you're attempting to make or you're, you're, you're suggesting that we make, are these adjustments that are coming from, maybe this is in line with your question, Commissioner Rossdine. Are these adjustments coming from someone other than us or are you making these adjustments locally?
So we're making the adjustments locally. So just like the clarifications with income, as we go through our daily processes, sometimes things change or we feel that there needs to be more clarification. Like you'll see with the clarification for the contributions of gifts. And you'll notice that what we added in there where there are different types of income sources people can have now, such as PayPal, Venmo, and Cash App. So we felt that it was needed that we're very clear on exactly what constitutes income sources that we're looking for. Just like joint bank accounts, we want to make sure our folks understand that if their name is on a bank account, it has to be included as income sources. So we're just trying to spell things out as clearly as we can to make sure there's no discrepancies as far as when we request information that's required.
Okay. And I would, I, I would guess that these, these suggestions are in line with, with, with the Section Eight guidelines as well. We're not, we're not doing something that's sort of above and beyond.
No, absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
It, it's interesting that you, you even get down to having to, to list things like PayPal and, and Venmo. You know, that's the, we talk about the change of times here. That's interesting. So I, I don't, okay. So if, if someone marries, so you can have, you can have two single folks that could be in the program, but if they married, it would take them out of the program? Is that what you're attempting to do here with the, with the head of household or what are you, what are you trying to do there?
Again, we're just trying to clarify that if someone is an independent, so it's a mother and a child on a program. And then while she's holding that voucher, she marries. Her husband becomes part of that household, but so does his income. So we have to take that income to make sure they still income qualify. So we want to make sure and that it's very clear that when, you know, she marries, he becomes part of the household, their income is joined.
Okay. And then under Chapter 11, Danielle, you've mentioned that there's, say again, what the percentage was of, of just those with social security?
It's really like 99. I'm not kidding. It's like 99.7%. It's only point zero three percent that we have where there's adults on disability.
Okay. Okay. So is if, is, is there a, I guess, is there a, there's a difference of how much they get based on how much their retirement funds are contributing to them and social security and, and is there a step down or is there a phase? I, I don't quite understand what we're doing there. So you're identifying sources of income. And that, that says whether or not they're eligible to receive these, these funding, this funding.
Subsidy, correct. It, it ensures that they're able to receive a subsidy because it's income-based. And also that's what drives the subsidy payment that we pay on their behalf as well.
Okay, okay. Yeah, just when you added all those, those those incomes, you know, you're like, well, wait a minute. So I would suspect that if somebody is on social security and is getting, I mean, because there are retirement funds now that also you could get social security at the same time. There's some that are doing that. And that would take them out of the, of being able to get these funds if they're getting, if they reach a threshold, correct?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Commissioner, I just want to point out, I think there's a little bit of clarification needed here. This recommended change is not changing our eligibility for folks. It's not changing the income eligibility threshold that's already there. What this is changing is the recertification process because typically we recertify folks on an annual basis. What we're doing is identifying a group of individuals that are older adults that only have social security as their income. And we're saying, we know they have that standard income. It's easy to verify. And we are only going to review them on an every third year basis at the same intensity level that we, that we do the recertification process for other individuals on the program. So we're not changing the income eligibility parameters for the vouchers.
Okay. I, yeah, and I appreciate, that's kind of where I was going. You said it much better, Celine. That's, that's kind of where my line of questioning was going. So I appreciate that.
You and Danielle dig very deep and because, because you guys are, are on those levels. So I'm, I'm always a very basic. You got to explain it to me on the basic level. So we're, we're.
Yeah. And just to add a little more to that, if we have somebody new to the program, we're not right away putting them into that streamlined process because we want to have some time to see how it goes and if there's any additions made to their income for their annual recertification. So it's, we're kind of analyzing as we go here to add anybody to the streamlined process.
Okay. Thank, thank you all. I appreciate that. Thanks. Sure.
I'd like to state that.
Danielle, could you walk us through the remote video inspection? Why, how's that work?
Absolutely. So basically we're using either FaceTime or Zoom. And what actually happens is the inspector actually has a checklist that we always go through when they're actually physically inspecting the property. And they pretty much take the phone or the iPad or whatever, and they go through the entire checklist. So Michael is our inspector, Gaffney. He's going to request that they even show simple things such as GFIs, which have to be in the kitchen and the bathrooms. He makes them press the smoke detectors, make sure they're working, but they go through the entire checklist to make sure. There's also an affidavit that the landlord must sign stating that there are no life-threatening conditions as well. And then we also speak with the tenant singly at a different time to make sure there are no concerns that they have as well. So there's kind of in triplicate. And also what our, 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 excuse me, our housing inspector is doing now is he does a drive-by of each location. So while he can't physically go in, he's still going past each property to make sure there's nothing that looks alarming from the outside as well.
Thank you. I, I just want to state that I view this as quality control and fraud prevention. I think you guys are being very proactive. You know, in the past, I actually lost an election over this issue. I think it shows how compassionate we are, that we can't just throw our elderly disabled veterans out on the street, that there's a lot of misnomers surrounding this program. And the fact that you bring this in front of us with these quality control mechanisms show that this is a legitimate operation and shows our compassion. And with that, I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the display of the annual plan for 45 days for public review and comment. Also announce a public hearing prior to April 17th, 2021 to consider approval to submit FY 21 annual plan to HUD.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. And just to add on to what Commissioner Boucher shared, definitely appreciate, one, my colleagues' passion and deliberate questions throughout this discussion. And two, Danielle and the entire team, the ability to not just answer them, but provide your candid insight, allowing us to keep moving forward. So this is again, some good news across the board. I have a motion in a second. Are there any further discussions? Seeing here none, all in favor? Moving forward, we got four oh. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to a request for approval for a 15-year extension renewal of the payment in lieu of taxes or pilot for Westminster Bond Senior Apartments. And Celine, I believe you're still.
I am still.
Mr. Jefferson is on. Who else are you bringing on?
I have Ted Zaleski on as well, our Director of Management and Budget, and also Rob Bark, our comptroller, just because of the, the, the different pieces financially that this, that this touches on. So I did want to also acknowledge I have Danielle Yates with us on as well, since this does include our Housing Bureau. And what, as you're aware, we have come before you with Conifer Realty several different, on several different occasions where we presented information to request the renewal of the 15-year payment in lieu of of taxes pilot agreement for Westminster Bond Senior Apartments, otherwise known as Sunnybrook. To those of us who work with folks that live there and with that apartment complex. And the pilot would allow the property to be exempt from payment of Carroll County's ordinary real property taxes. In June, you had already granted a one-year extension because the pilot was expiring by June 30th. So you had already granted a one-year extension of this pilot agreement and had requested additional information. So we came back before you on December 10th, provided some additional detail, which brought up a few more questions related to the physical needs and cost estimates, rental increase history, gross projected revenue, and then also rental revenue versus expenses. So what we have done today in your board packets, you should have received this information. I see you have it, Commissioner Boucher. Thank you. And so David Jefferson is here today and we've reviewed it with David prior to this. And he wants to provide explanation to you and walk you through each one of the data elements and then also answer any questions that you have. So David, thank you for coming on board with us today.
David, prior to you having a conversation or, or sharing your views, are there any comments from the commissioners in moving forward and allowing David to, to present at this point? Okay. Okay.
Thank you. Good morning. Again, my name is David Jefferson and I'm the Regional Vice President for the Maryland Area for Conifer Realty. We're really excited to present today in reference to preserving the pilot agreement, extending it for the next 15 years in our efforts to continue to provide affordable housing for the residents of Sunnybrook. So the first document that we'll take a look at is the physical needs overturn. So what you'll see in this document, we have identified capital needs that will need to happen on this property over the next 10 years, beginning with this year, 2021. And what you will see is that there are several high-level, oh, great, it's right in front of me. There are several high-level repairs that are needed to the building to sustain this housing. And what you'll see at the bottom of this is what those annual costs will be for making these repairs over the next 10 years. And then that is juxtaposed against our annual reserve funding for the year. So we place about $79,000 a year into the reserve budget for this property. So based on that, as you can see, over the course of the 10 years, we are severely below the, the level of capital funding that is needed to do these routine repairs and replacements at the property. So that's what we wanted to highlight in this document. So in here you have, you know, the, the typical useful life for the particular item as well as the effective age of what is existing at the building. Anyone have any questions on this document?
So that's what we wanted to. No. Anything else? Mr. Jefferson, anything?
Yes. So that, that's the, so that's the capital needs assessment of the property. The next document is the historical property rents. So one of the things that this pilot allows us to do is to keep our rents below market and also below the maximum tax credit rents that we could charge at Sunnybrook. So what this chart shows is that since 2011, for the past 10 years, this chart is showing, let's see, it's the next tab. Okay. So what this tab shows is that over the course of the past 10 years, we have averaged keeping our rents on our one and two bedrooms, average of 20% below the, the, the maximum tax credit rent or market rent, which the maximum tax credit rent is still below the market rent for Carroll County. But this rent is also below the maximum tax credit rent. So this pilot agreement allows us to keep our rents at an affordable rate for the seniors in this building who are, you know, as you know, are living on pensions and or social security. So we want to be able to continue to keep our rents on pace with minimum increases and keep them below the max tax credit limits so that we can maintain the affordability. Any questions on that document? I can go to the next one.
Up, seeing none. Keep going.
So the next document is our historical gross potential rent and subsidy. So this document shows what our gross potential rent was for the property for years going back to 2004. And then it also shows our rental revenue that was collected, our subsidy that was collected. Then it gives you a total for revenue for each year. Then it gives you a total for revenue for each year at the property. So what it's showing is that, you know, over the course of the year that we've had significantly small changes in the, the gross potential rent that we have charged residents. And also you can see the differences in subsidy. Now, the subsidy amounts fluctuate based on how many people we have at the building with vouchers. So, you know, that number, that number typically will modulate depending on if we have more voucher holders or less voucher holders. The reason why the income is significantly low in oh-four and oh-five, because at that time, the building was smaller. In two thousand and six, we added another wing onto the building. So that's why the income significantly is significantly higher as you go from two thousand and six forward. The chart in front of you is really a great illustration of this because it shows what are kind of the, the trend line of our income and also how it relates to our expenses. And as you can see, as we get to, you know, the last couple of years, those trend lines have significantly come together as they did, you know, back in twenty thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, that area as well. So we're at a place where our income is barely meeting the expenses of the property. So this is another reason why, you know, granting this pilot extension will be great for this building and also maintaining affordability. Any questions on the GPR document and, and the expense document?
How many, um, how many residents are in the apartments right now in the complex?
Uh, we have a hundred and fifty units there and right now we have eight vacant units.
So a hundred and forty-two occupied right now?
Yes.
Out of the hundred and forty-two occupied units, how many are voucher holders?
There are approximately, from my understanding, about maybe twenty percent of those residents are voucher holders. We don't have a large number of voucher holders at this particular property.
So between twenty-five and thirty would be fair to say are voucher holders?
Yes.
Commissioner, I do also want to note that if you reference back to the chart that is the historical gross potential, they show the subsidy for our voucher holders listed on there and, and the amount that they're getting total from the vouchers through the HUD program, from our Section Eight Public Housing Voucher Program.
Okay. Sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Weaver.
How, how are the subsidies collected? Do they give it to the individual or they go directly to the farm?
They, they come directly to us. They don't go to the resident.
Okay, so any subsidy, whatever, does not go through the resident. You, you collect nothing from them?
Well, the, the way the, the way the subsidy works, typically there is a resident portion and then a subsidy portion. So just say for instance, after, after the housing agency calculates the income of the resident, say the rent on the apartment is a thousand a month, the agency determines that, you know, Mrs. Jones can pay three hundred a month, then seven hundred would come from the ages, from your housing agency. So we will receive a three hundred dollar payment from the resident every month and then a seven hundred dollar payment from the housing agency on a monthly basis. So typically that payment from the housing authority comes monthly in one check with a, or one direct deposit with a, a deposit advice that lets us know how to allocate those payments to the respective residents.
Mr. Jefferson.
Yes.
Thanks for all these charts. This is very informative. Would you happen to know the number of what the potential rent increase will be for your occupants if you didn't get this credit?
Well, you know, on our buildings, we typically do somewhere between a three to five percent increase on our buildings typically. Now, in some jurisdictions, it just depends, like right now during COVID, some jurisdictions have limited all management companies to a two-point-six percent increase. So it just depends county by county, but typically it would be somewhere between three and five percent. Because with the increase, we look at the, where the max tax credit rent is and also, you know, what the market can bear and also we take into consideration, you know, our residents. Because if, you know, we, you know, go with a very high rent increase, then, you know, we get a lot of calls and so we try to make it somewhere that it's a reasonable increase and also in line with whatever the jurisdiction requires and also in line with staying below the tax credit maximum.
Thank you for your reply. So whether you get this credit or not, the rents should all go up, or they not?
Yeah, rents will go up this year and I, and on this property, we're doing a two-point-six rent increase because we've been doing that across the board because most jurisdictions in the state are doing two-point-six. So we kind of made a decision that we want to do that across the board because we don't want to get into a situation where, you know, in one county, we're doing something here and then in Prince George's County, we're doing something else.
Thank you, Mr. Jefferson. You do a noble work. I was wondering if we could hear possibly from our, our budget director and our comptroller on this, if they want to weigh in, if they're out there listening to discuss the impact of this, if we did or did not move forward with this.
Go ahead, Rob.
Okay, Commissioners, can you hear me okay?
You're good.
Great. Just to give a little context to the pilot itself, this is the only pilot agreement that the county has in place and the only one I'm familiar with over the last fifteen-plus years that I've been dealing with this agreement. I think in the briefing paper, I provided to Celine a little bit of a, a financial piece. So the pilot amount, while, while the cause to forego what would be the calculated real property tax, the amount that the pilot has called for is sixty-two thousand dollars as a flat dollar amount. As assessments increase and the tax would be increasing, that amount stays flat and the amount of savings to be had will be increasing. Over the last two years, that's been almost eleven thousand in fiscal year twenty and almost twelve thousand eight hundred in fiscal year twenty-one. I didn't recalculate for twenty-two yet. I believe the property was just reassessed here in the last month. And so could look at that going forward, but, so that's about the, the dollar amounts that are in place. And as we said, with the one-year extension, this would expire June thirtieth. You know, I generally calculate this credit during the month of July and, and rebuild them around August first. So that's kind of the timeline we're in.
Thank you. So we're looking at a loss of almost thirteen thousand. Is that how I should look at that?
That's what it was in this current year. And, and so it'll be in that ballpark going forward. And as assessments increase, the amount of, of savings or lost revenue will be increasing if the amount stays the same, the sixty-two thousand.
Which, which for me, which for me begs the question, why fifteen years here? Because of the volatility of, of, of the, the rough, you know, the rough seas that are ahead. Why, why are we locking in on fifteen here? Wouldn't it be more fiscally responsible to bring that down? So as to, i- if, if adjustments would need to be made accordingly, or am I missing something there, Rob?
There, I don't believe there's any legal requirement for it to be fifteen. That was basically the term of the original agreement. I've often seen the terms on these either tie into some tax credits or into the financing on projects. So I would say I'd probably defer to the property owner about what their plans and other demands on their resources are over that period.
Yeah, Commissioner Wands, I, I was thinking really the same thing, along with if this is the only property that we're doing this with, we're setting a precedence and, or the precedence has been set. And that does concern me in moving forward, especially for long-term programs like this. So, Mr. Jefferson, thoughts on the fifteen-year mark? Or what can and cannot be done?
Well, I think it does a couple of things for us. As you know, not only are, you know, our expenses to run the property are going up on a annual basis, typically anywhere between three to seven percent going up in terms of our operating expense side. The other thing that I think is very important that, you know, this also, this, this credit, you know, is also helping us with, you know, maintaining this building as affordable. One of the things that, you know, with, you know, tax credit buildings, you know, you can, you know, we would be forced to raise our income, raise our rents, you know, to meet our debt service. Because those, those costs are costs that are going to continue to go up over the next ten to fifteen years. So I, I think it helps us with that. I think also one thing that you have to look at as well with Conifer is that we are investing in Carroll County and Westminster. We have a new development that we have, you know, been approved in our building, a thirty-five unit affordable apartment complex in Westminster City, as well as the twenty-unit Westminster Way, the former Union Village, which we are busy leasing up now. So we've made a significant investment in this area to provide affordable housing, not only to seniors, but now we are reaching out to a new population as we are also providing affordable housing for families in the area as well. So I think that's a significant piece that should be looked at as well, you know, as you make your decision on extending this pilot.
Hey, Commissioner Wands, I apologize. Did you have more? Okay.
Yeah, go, go ahead.
The new units, do they have, are you requesting the same tax break on those as you did on this one?
I, I don't have that information in front of me, but I can find, I can let Danielle or Celine know.
And throughout the state, I mean, you have basically units everywhere here. Do you have the same agreements between other counties?
We do in some instances. You know, one of the things with developing affordable housing, because the margins just are not the same as with the development of market rate housing. You know, we do make the requests for pilots because it assists us in being able to deliver the units and also sustain the units. So we do make those requests. And we do have other, other agreements in other jurisdictions.
At fifteen-year length of time?
It, it depends. You know, we have some that are ten years, some that are fifteen. It, it really just depends on the, you know, the individual jurisdiction.
Now, you said three to seven percent expenses per year you add in as, it, it's going to cost you. Wouldn't, wouldn't taxes be automatically added into that as you're calculating your expenses?
Well, we, well, we base those expenses, you know, on the operating expense, but the taxes, we look at that, we base that based on continuing with the pilot. So that's staying at that controllable expense level that we know it's going to be not based on the assessment. So when you factor that in, then, you know, that's another level of expense burden for the property.
Which is about what, thirty dollars a month per unit?
Uh, for that, to reach that twelve, thirteen thousand dollar range? Yeah, if you do the math, it's somewhere around there.
And do the vouchers cover additional expenses if given there? Would they be, would the vouchers be, go up with the rent at this point or not?
So the vouchers cover, so we look at vouchers the same way we would if, you know, if we had a resident who was paying the full rent, the voucher covers the same amount of rent. So there's no difference between a voucher resident rent and a regular paying, full, full pay resident. There's no difference between the two in terms of the, the revenue.
If you increase the rent, does the voucher increase with the rent, Daniel, maybe?
So we have to make a, I'm sorry, we have to make a request for the increase.
Right. So what they do is annually, they can make a request for an increase. If they make a request and it falls within our regular payment standards, we can approve it. But yes, the increase would drive us to pay more of a subsidy on that person's behalf.
Commissioner, you had asked, you had asked how many different pilot agreements that the Conifer has throughout Maryland? And they had reported that in the previous session and they have ten different pilot agreements throughout the state of Maryland.
Like state, Ms. Yates, you made a good clarification. That's very helpful in understanding this. Also, Mr. Jefferson, you articulated a lot of the, the things and challenges that we as a county are faced with as well. So I'm very sympathetic to what you're going through. But this affects our tax base and we're in a bad, bad pinch ourselves. And I foresee inflation taking place and locking this down at a set figure could be detrimental to us in the long term. Though I'm sympathetic to what you're going through, I'd like to see some sort of alternative to helping you out instead of having this in lieu of taxes, with maybe helping out with increasing the subsidies. If that would be helpful to you, I'd, I'd like to see an alternative route instead of giving this fifteen-year extension to you. Because I think it poses a lot of problems to us on the long term in Eric County, for our budget office and Eric Comptroller's office.
Well, I guess the, the question becomes, you know, in terms of increasing subsidy, you know, that, a couple of things with that. One, you know, we would have to have, you know, more residents who have vouchers. Two, they're still payment standards as Ms. Yates just mentioned. You know, we, she can't just arbitrarily increase the subsidy amount for, you know, residents that are existing on the voucher program. It just kind of doesn't work that way. So I think, you know, the viable option is, you know, to, to do the extension. The viable option is to, to look at, or maybe we look at, you know, looking at possibly changing the number of years on the extension. You know, maybe it's a, a ten-year extension, you know, and, you know, move from there. I mean, I think there's other ways, but I don't think that would be a viable option to increase the subsidy because there are program requirements for that. And then that will also, I, I guess the last piece I'll say to that is that, you know, then that would, you know, reduce Ms. Yates' ability to provide vouchers to other families in the county or in the city.
Miss Yates, with a one-year, if we change this to just one year instead of fifteen, would your office and the Steckles office be able to readjust and, and, and meet the subsidies as, as are a concern to Mr. Jefferson?
So it, it gets a little tricky, Mr. Jeffon, this is, is correct. So we have payment standards that they must meet. When you look at a payment standard, it's the portion of their rent, including their utilities, and it can't go over that amount. So annually, they would be able to request that. I would have to see if it falls within payment standards and if it does, we could of course approve that and pay an additional subsidy based on that. But remember, the subsidy is based on each individual's income, how much we pay on their behalf and then how much they pay. So it's not as easy as we can just increase subsidy overall for each individual that is at Sunnybrook.
And the other piece of this is to, to remember that, that, the, the voucher program that we administer with our public housing authority is tied to the individual. It's not project-based at a certain building. So those, the subsidies that are currently being received by Conifer at Sunnybrook now do not need to remain there. Someone chooses to relocate to a different housing property. or into a private apartment, they certainly have the opportunity to do that. And so those are not guaranteed numbers of subsidy at Sunnybrook or or people that have subsidy that go to Sunnybrook, that are living at Sunnybrook. That number can ebb and flow depending upon the individual voucher holder's choice.
Thanks for the clarification. I did note, we have what, approximately twenty percent of the residents in our facility receiving subsidies? Is that correct?
Yes, it's around twenty or thirty percent, correct.
It's not like a majority of people in their residency are getting subsidies. The rest will be taken out by private citizens in their own lease agreements.
Correct.
I I asked this question before. I can't remember. I might have gotten the answer. But are these bond apartments, are they in the city limits? Westminster City?
No, it is not in the city.
So it's in the county. Okay. Thanks, Rob. I I couldn't remember. All right. Well, I I got to tell you, I'm, this is a tough one. I I I think this is a great, I think this is a good program. I I think that what we're seeing over there is is beneficial to the folks that are that are that are living there. My only concern, as you probably already know, is locking into something for fifteen years. I'm having a tough time with that one. I think that's just far too long based on the volatility of what we're seeing here. And I don't know how much it would be affected over those fifteen years, but I just, I'm uncomfortable with that time period. For me, I I guess I need a bottom line here and maybe it's Rob, you, I don't know, or Ted. Just bottom line this on on revenue for me. What, if 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 we would lock it in for fifteen, Rob, don't, I I just think that's too long. I think, I mean, we balance, we balance our budget, we we work on our budget for five years or six, however you want to look at it. And beyond that, we we we're not, we don't go any further than that. So, I mean, at the very least, I think mirroring how we do our 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 budget and revenue here would be something to look at. But, you know, just not, not having a clear, and I don't know that anybody does, if I did, I probably wouldn't be sitting here having a clear knowledge of where the market's going to be in fifteen years. But your your thought, your expertise, Rob, I just think fifteen seems to be a little bit long here to lock in on something that in in the middle of such volatility here. Your your thoughts on that?
Rob, just before you jump in, I, because I agree with you, Commissioner Lance. Keeping it to our cycle, a five-year cycle, you know, makes sense. Fifteen years to me is, we're getting to a point of imperperity, you know, and it'll be three, four cycles of commissioners between now and then. If we keep it to our budget cycle, I think makes more sense, but go go ahead, Rob.
Sure. Just a few thoughts there. While you were having some discussion, I did peek at the a recent assessment that just came out here in the last month. The assessment did not change. It had the same assessment, which means their tax assessment will will remain the same for the next three fiscal years, fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. So the tax obligation would remain the same there for the savings and the revenue lost to us would remain the same for the next three years. To my knowledge, there really are no restrictions on the terms of the pilot, either the dollar amount, the floor, the sixty-two thousand, or the term, the ten years, five years, fifteen years. So there's variables there. As I mentioned, we're looking at about almost thirteen thousand in savings in this past year, eleven thousand the year before. So, you know, you could reduce the term and do a five-year or something. Our risk there is pretty small since we know the next three years would be locked in. You could look at adjusting that floor amount, the sixty-two thousand. It's been that for the last fifteen-plus years. You know, that could jump by a couple of thousand dollars and and set yourself up for the next fifteen-year cycle. The pilot is in agreement. It can also build in some kind of escalator. You could do, you know, sixty-four thousand for two years and then jump to sixty-six or sixty-eight. You know, you can set terms like that. And I'm not even, this might be a little more creative, not even certain you couldn't set it at a percentage below tax obligation. If, geez, hate to do this off the top of my head, but, you know, if you want to say fifteen percent below market of the obligation would be the pilot amount, you could probably tie it in like that. And as total taxes went up, the floor would go up, but they'd remain at fifteen percent below the obligation. So we can sort of control the risk with the term or the amount of the of of the amount they're required to pay, the payment in lieu.
Mr. Burke, there's some wonderful suggestions. What I'm thinking of would be do a two-year extension, which would be the balance of our term as commissioners. And that could give our Citizen Services Department enough time to work on readjusting how these subsidies are done, see if that's enough timeframe for them to eventually pick this up and completely do away with this program. I don't think we should be constantly coming back looking at this. I think the program should terminate in two years and in that two years allow Citizen Services to shift the way we do compensate this senior living facility more in line with the subsidies that we get, I guess, from the state and federal government. So that way, it would ensure that the apartment complex does get the financial resources they need, just that it would come from a different source than us as accounting, since we as a county are so stressed. Instead, giving them the money for a tax credit, we could try to backfill that with any programs that are out there. And in two years' time, I think hopefully we could figure out a way to do that. That it's it's an idea. I'd love to hear from my colleagues on that concept.
That that's, I guess that's fine, but if the assessment isn't going to change in three years, I would be more apt to to at least go three, you know, and then and then take a look at it. I mean, that does several things here. You know, if you lock into something for fifteen years, you lock it and then you forget about it, really. But if you do it at a more, an accelerated rate, there's a, there's a positive here, I think. And Rob has touched on some of those. I mean, we could even do some of the things that he's suggesting, but i- if it's, if it's, if it's a lesser amount of years that we're locked into, it it prompts that and and pokes these folks to really look into it and whether or not we're still in line with the market, the assessments, and that type of thing. I would rather do it that way. And I think that makes sense. It makes sense to me. I I just think you, that, that had a lot of weight when you said they're locked in for the next three years with assessments, Rob. I think that's a, I think that's a good way to look at this. So I would, I I don't, I I'm not, I'm not a big fan of going more than three. I think that's plenty. You know, doing five, then what happens on that year four and five? This, I think this just allows us to be able to look at it or whoever it's going to be to look at, look at it as they move forward. So I'd be good with three and then move on from there and see what, see where, that's my thoughts.
Do we have a motion?
Three years goes, oh, sorry. Three years, three years gives us probably the right amount of time on this. I was going to suggest that anyway. I do like Rob's idea, fifteen percent below market. That is, takes the volatility out of it and really gives some stability, I think, to this whole thing for us. So I I, three years is, I I think, the correct timeframe for me.
When does this, when does this end? Again, I'm sorry, I missed it. Is it June?
June thirtieth. The extension that you gave last year gave them to June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, okay. So I I mean, I even hate to suggest this, but I I sort, I sort of agree with you, Commissioner Weaver. You know, perhaps inserting that language where it's fifteen percent below market would would keep us in a good spot too. But I guess if the assessment's not going up, I'm not so sure that that would really even apply for the next three years. Would it, Rob?
I was just about to check what the actual percentage is, but it's it's very close to that. And as I mentioned, right, it'll be fixed for the next three years. So over a three-year term, I don't think there's any difference there.
All right, I'm going to make the motion that we approve a three-year extension renewal of the pilot agreement for the Westminster Bond Senior Apartments.
Second.
Okay, got a motion in a second again. Fantastic discussion and appreciate all the insight that you all bring into the table. Any further discussion, comments?
I just want, thank you. I just very quickly want to thank Mr. Jefferson for the research you put into this and the charts and the graphs. Those are very informative and I'm very empathetic to the servicing provider community. And I'm hoping that this is some sort of compromise that you can walk away with something and we can walk away with something and we'll be very happy with it. So thank you very much for what you've done presenting today.
No, thank you all. And, you know, look forward to and continue to work with you and, hey, I'll see you in three years. Thanks a lot.
All favor? Okay, four oh. Thank you again, sir. And ladies and you too, Mr. Burke. Okay, let's move on to second quarter budget update. The one, the only Mr. Zaleski, still with the minor league football team around his neck. Go ahead.
That's weighing me down. All right, so just want to update you on what's happening this year. This is largely a good news story and in some ways a very good news story. Just want you to hear this, though, in context of much of what we're going to be talking about is the result of short-term changes, not fundamental, long-term change that we can count on. And again, to remind everybody that COVID continues, we still have uncertainty and for us particularly, the uncertainty of what will happen to businesses and jobs before we get through all this. Okay, so we look at where we've been so far in this fiscal year. We are projecting right now about a twenty-three million dollar surplus at the end of the year. I'm going to explain where that money's coming from. Now, if that were to happen, four million of that is already planned for fiscal year twenty-three. That's the one percent we build into our op plan every year, leaving about nineteen million dollars that would be available for other uses. And before I get to more specifics about what's happening this year, let me tell you what that does for our total unassigned fund balance. The money we basically have sitting on the sidelines waiting for commissioners to make some choices. You currently have about thirty million dollars. Now, you remember, that was largely because we made choices to hang on to that money when COVID started to give us some cushion, some some room if things went bad. If we add this nineteen million to the existing, that would be about forty-nine million dollars that we would have in unassigned fund balance. We'll be talking more about this as we go through the budget process, but just to give you a little start to thinking about this. We've talked on a number of occasions about the value of having some money in unassigned fund balance. It gives us flexibility. It reduces our concerns about short-term variations, neither revenues or expenditures. And we've talked about how good it would be to have money sitting there in an ongoing way. So one of the things I'm going to be talking to you about is taking this opportunity to decide how much unassigned fund balance do we want to keep just as a matter of practice? And we might be, find ourselves talking about something like keeping five percent of our budget, which would mean holding on to maybe twenty-one million dollars. And and my suggestion will be that we we do that with an idea that that is our intent, to keep that much money there, to give us the flexibility to handle short-term variability in our budget. Now, if we keep twenty-one and all this plays out, that leaves another twenty-eight million dollars that would be available. And again, my intent will be to talk more about this later, but just to put the idea out there. There are two things that I think we can look at doing. One would be to replace some of our planned debt with cash, reduce the amount of debt we're taking on, reduce the amount of debt service we're taking on and reduce our ongoing expenditures. The other would be to look at our infrastructure concerns and identify some of the places that we think have the highest priorities and put some more money into our capital budget to make progress on infrastructure. Okay, now back to this year. Property tax, our biggest revenue, looks to be pretty much on target. We do have some concern looking ahead about a piece of property tax and that's the personal property related to businesses. It's not yet clear what businesses that have gone out of business will have on our revenues. And there's there's no way for us to even try to quantify this. So we have a question mark that we know won't be answered until we actually see a change in the revenue. Income tax, as things stand, we're projecting that will be about eight million dollars over budget at the end of the year. Really important. This is largely driven by reconciling distributions from previous tax years. This is not about increasing the line that moves forward into the future. This is about money from yesterday. Recordation, as things stand, we're looking to come in about six million dollars above budget. This has been a really big surprise. Now, we actually backed off a little bit of twenty-one, assuming that people weren't going to be shopping for homes. Now, that turned out to not be right, but even at that, this has been an amazing increase in in activity. And and again, I don't believe we should take any message from this that we will continue at this level i- in the future. Maybe there's been a change so that we're going to inch up some, but there, I don't see any way that we could think that this is going to be an ongoing trend.
Yeah, excuse me real quickly. What was the increase difference? Six million, you said?
Yes, that, right now, projecting six million. Of course, we still have rest of the year to see what happens. And then we've lost about ten, two million dollars of revenue against budget from things that are activity-driven, where where activities are not happening. So we think about recreation, wine festivals, senior center. Any place where there was money coming in because of activities has largely been wiped out. But netting all that, we see revenues about twelve million dollars above budget. On the expenditure side, another very short-term thing, we're going to be able to pick up a lot of our transportation costs with CARES funding. So we have a more than one million dollar savings in fiscal year twenty-one. Then there are things that happen in in every year, some maybe more so this year. Fuel savings is probably being driven some by reduced activity. And we have salary savings and, you know, there's there's actually nothing really interesting here, just a accumulation of savings throughout the whole organization. And then we have our four-point-four million dollar reserve for contingencies remains intact. Always want to say, until we get through the winter, you don't want to get too comfortable that that's going to be be left. You know, because we try to budget reasonably for snow removal, but we we can never budget enough to handle the worst years and then that's where the reserve will come into play. And then debt service is down seven hundred thousand. That's partially because we issued less debt than we had planned for and partially the impact of the last refunding that we did. All that comes up to expenditure-side savings of about eleven million dollars. So I started off talking about the twenty-two-point-eight. That's a combination of the revenue in excess that I just talked about and the expenditures under budget. I don't think there's any reason to think that we're not going to come in with a significant surplus. There are still things that could happen that would reduce this. Uh, but I think in the end, those two big ideas that I talked about should remain in play, that we will have an opportunity to create for ourself uh, a savings account of sorts that I think will be a very good thing for us to have. And the other will be an opportunity to either reduce debt and or do some work on our infrastructure. Okay, um, anything that I can go deeper for you on any of that?
Everything you just covered. It's only one time monies, correct?
Largely, that's true.
Just one. One shot, okay.
And next month, we'll be spending more time talking about revenues and we'll get into a little bit more pulling apart what's what. But but what you said is the big message here. This is being driven by short term conditions.
Ted, I'm I'm wondering if some of this one time money could be used potentially to address the, uh, the waste management infrastructure issue we have, which seems to be an ongoing problem. If we can potentially address that, that might be a wise use of that funding.
When you say infrastructure, you mean physical changes to landfill?
Yes, sir.
Yes, that's certainly a choice you could make. Okay, well, if there's nothing else, then, um, you also have in front of you a capital budget resolution. Uh, C 21.04. This is to close out a project. There's a little over $720 left on it, and we want to move that to the Wreckin Parks unallocated account just to get this cleaned up. And I I think I saw Commissioner Ross Dean smile at the $720 there. Just want to point out, uh, this is something you might want to think about. There was a time when the Budget Office had authority in both the capital budget and the operating budget to make changes like this, basically administrative cleanup, not policy decisions, but just taking care of loose ends without having to make this an item to come to the board. I think there's a lot of good arguments for us getting back to something like that a- again. Uh, if the commissioners were interested in talking about that, we can talk about exactly what that would would look like. Uh, but it would make our lives easier and it would make it unnecessary for you to have to schedule something.
I'll tell you, I I am absolutely, uh, interested in that conversation. Um, you know, I've done this, uh, in the past in different, you know, venues and different responsibilities, dealing with, uh, these type of budgets and giving you that, uh, ability allows for a much more efficient approach. I'm not sure why that was taken away from you. I'm sure, uh, well, I almost say I'm sure. I bu- I would believe that Commissioner Lance and Weaver had much more insight on that because decisions were made in the past. Um, but, uh, getting a a feel for the ability to delegate those responsibilities, uh, within a threshold, uh, to allow you to be more efficient, I'm I don't know, I I'm personally and professionally, uh, for that type of effort. Um, Commissioner Lance Weaver, I mean, you you have a better understanding from this from the past or what are your thoughts?
Well, I actually think that happened before our time. Uh, that 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 was taken away back in, well, I don't want to guess. I think it was before, was it before you, Roberta? Yep, okay, so, yeah, I'm thinking '07, '08, somewhere back in there, '06, but I don't know, somewhere back there. I I remember having this discussion, uh, a- about this before. Uh, may I suggest in the interest of time that we do take this up and do it, uh, during our budget session? Make it make it, uh, uh, an item of, uh, an agenda item, uh, during our budget discussion to just include that, uh, to assist them uh, in any way and put some, you know, put a limit on it or whatever, uh, whatever it occurs there, but maybe we could make that part of our our our, uh, our adventure that starts in March.
I agree. Good, good way to handle it.
Yeah, it sounds great. And to think we are less than 30 days away from March. So, uh, yeah, I I I think that's, I appreciate you bringing that up, Ted. And, uh, okay, what else you want to talk about?
Uh, so we just need a a vote to approve moving that.
Yes.
Twenty dollars.
Yeah, I was going to go ahead and make the motion that we approve the capital resolution, C 2104. Close out the Winfield property and remove the remaining funds uh, of $720.27 to the unallocated account for Wreckin Parks, 9319.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion with Commissioner Weaver being upset that he wasn't able to second? All in favor? Okay, four oh. Thank you, um, Deb and Ted.
Let's make Ted's life easier because he has it tough.
Okay. Not sure I want to do that just quite yet, but that's all right. Let's, uh, move on to look at the reimbursement from the Maryland 911 Board and a request for approval for acceptance of that reimbursement. Scott and Jack, you are on.
Good morning, Commissioners. It's my pleasure, but as you'll hear me say later, it's to Jack Brown's credit that we are here to ask you to please accept of reimbursement that has been, uh, requested of and subsequently approved by the Maryland 911 Board for reoccurring maintenance costs. And I'm going to digressively here, Commissioners, and I have to say that there's only one reason that we're, uh, able to make this, uh, this presentation to you today is because Jack Brown took the initiative to come to, uh, review our eligible expenses, compile a a project, submit it to the numbers board successfully as usual. And, uh, in this case, a situation where the county can recoup over $107,000 of expense that we would have incurred otherwise. So I hate to use the word, and Ted, if you're still on here, you'll probably hate me to use it, but it it's free money in the sense that um, we would have incurred these expenses, but thanks to the, uh, the the recent legislation related to 911, these expenses are eligible for reimbursement. And then thanks to Jack's efforts, we have an opportunity to take advantage of that. So we respectfully ask the the Commissioners, accept the 107,393.02 reimbursement offered by the Maryland 911 Board.
And what are you doing with that money again? Did I miss it? Or I'm sorry, what what what's going on with that 107,000?
Commissioner, I believe that any the forms of reimbursement like this goes back to, uh, and and I know Ted's here, I believe it goes to the general fund. It it does not come back to us, Commissioner, like to, uh, subsidize our budget, et cetera. It it it's accounted for, it's properly, um, accepted by the county, but I believe it goes back into the general fund and it's used, I guess, through by your direction. It's not like we get that money back.
No, okay, so this is th- this is getting paid back for maintenance costs that we have incurred over the last however many months? Yes, okay.
That is, that's exactly what it is, Commissioner.
Okay, cool. All right. Well, now we got another $107,000, right, Ed? And, uh, right colleagues that we didn't have before. So now the budget just looks even better, right? I don't know.
I know. Just, okay, do we have a motion to accept this?
Yeah, I'll make, I'll I'll move that we accept the proposed reimbursement from the 911 Board. Uh, I'm a little challenged by the two cents, but I'll include that in my, uh, motion.
Second, and thank you, Jack.
Okay, again, we have a motion in a second. Uh, gentlemen, great job. Any further discussion? Seeing here none, all in favor? Okay, we got four very enthusiastic thumbs up. Okay, Jack, go back to work. Now let's talk about the Maryland Interstate Emergency Management Assistant Compact revisions, uh, that have been made to it and requesting approval of resolution. We still have Scott and Valerie, uh, you're on.
Thank you again, Commissioners. Um, this time I am going to, uh, yield to Ms. Hawkins to ask her to to briefly review what has changed. But with that, let me, uh, set the table by saying that the Maryland Emergency Management Assistance Compact has been reviewed and is indicated in a brief. There have been a a few substantive changes made to it, and it is now officially known as the Maryland Intra-State Emergency Management Compact. Uh, and it it always was an in- an intrastate, a within state, and now it clearly states same. So with that, Commissioners, I can turn it over to our emergency manager, Ms. Hawkins, and she can review for you, uh, what has changed.
Um, thank you, Scott, and good morning, Commissioners. Um, just a, you can see in the briefing paper, uh, there are several changes that have been made, uh, in addition to the name change for this particular piece of, uh, legislation. Uh, the original Maryland Emergency Management Assistance Compact, which was MEMAC without the I, uh, was adopted by all of the jurisdictions throughout the state, uh, on, uh, as of September 9th, 2013. Uh, so the idea of this is not new. Um, the whole idea behind it, its mission is to provide intrastate support to all 26 Maryland jurisdictions to assist in the response to disasters or emergencies by providing a mechanism for those jurisdictions to request and receive help from their neighbors. So basically, it's, uh, uh, legislation allows for all of the participating jurisdictions to get help during times of emergency uh, from their neighboring jurisdictions, or, you know, it doesn't have to be somebody contiguous to us. It could be, we could receive assistance to from Garrett County, uh, or we could provide assistance to Ocean City. Uh, it's just, uh, definitely within the state. Um, the functional areas that can be, uh, for assistance can be provided. It can be fire service, law enforcement, emergency medical services, transportation, communications, public works and engineering, building inspection, planning and information assistance, mass care, resource report, health and medical services, and search and rescue. So any of those types of, uh, needs, uh, and capabilities, uh, we could request or, uh, assist another jurisdiction. Um, so that's the the way it's been, uh, in the past. The changes, um, in pr- in MEMAC without the I, the previous version, a local declaration of emergency was a precursor to being able to utilize, uh, that legislation. Uh, that is no longer necessary under MEMAC with the I. Uh, and I'll continue to say it that way because we're pronouncing it, we're pronouncing the acronym the same way. Um, so we no longer have to have a declaration of emergency. Um, so assistance can be provided in both emergency situations and situations, uh, such as, uh, emergency management related exercises or testing or training. Um, so that's something that we've wanted for a long time, uh, in the emergency management community to be able to, uh, provide that assistance back and forth for testing and, uh, or training and especially for exercises. Uh, so that's very helpful to us. Um, there are some increased requirements, uh, for information sharing between party jurisdictions and MEMA. Um, the original MEMAC without the I, uh, encouraged that, and it really was a requirement, uh, but this is actually putting that into the letter of the law, uh, to make sure that uh, the the communication goes through and through MEMA and all all the the loops are closed. Uh, MEMA is the administrative coordinating body for all of this, uh, so, uh, it just helps to tie in some, uh, tie up some of the loose ends in the legislation before. Um, there are some procedural changes that are intent in there that are intended to increase the efficiency of the request process. So before, uh, the only way to get, uh, MEMAC request going was through MEMA. Uh, now this new legislation allows the authorized jurisdictional representative from one jurisdiction to directly contact another authorized, uh, representative in another jurisdiction to get the process going. So basically, so basically, I as the authorized representative can contact my counterpart in another county and get the process of assistance started, uh, and then there's 10 days that is allowed to to do the paperwork back and forth because there is always a cost with assistance. So part of what MEMAC, uh, addresses as well is, uh, determining the offer of assistance from an offering jurisdiction. And if we're going to offer assistance, for example, uh, we put that offer out there. We say this is how much we think it's going to cost and how much, uh, the receiving jurisdiction would need to reimburse us in the future. Uh, they decide to accept or not, and then we move on from there. Um, so that's how it's intended to work. We can choose, uh, if we, or any jurisdiction, that's, uh, uh, an assisting jurisdiction can choose uh, to, uh, eventually ask for, you know, and invoice the other, the receiving jurisdiction for, uh, the services or, uh, rendered. Or we can choose, uh, not to. We can say we're just going to donate that, uh, assistance to the other jurisdiction as, you know, as as a neighborly act uh, or anything in between. So all of those are options out there. So, uh, what we're asking today is simply for you, uh, as the Board of Commissioners, uh, to adopt this, uh, and uh, the the MEMAC with the I, uh, and, uh, just basically create that resolution and approve it so that, uh, we can continue to participate in the compact across the state. So with that, uh, hopefully that gives you, uh, the background and the detail that you need, but if you have any questions, please, uh, let me know and I'll do my best to answer them.
Okay, any thoughts? Yes, Commissioner Lance.
Now, I just think it's a good, this is something that's, uh, as Valerie said, been working on for a long time. We've talked about it at GMAC. There's another acronym for everybody. Uh, and, uh, the, uh, the GMAC, which is the Governor's Emergency Management Advisory Council, uh, fully uh, supports this move as well, and I think it's a great idea. And, uh, bottom line, it helps with mutual aid, and that's that's a good thing. Streamlines that, if you will. So I make the motion to approve Carroll County's participation in MEMAC to include execution of this, uh, resolution that we have.
Second.
Okay, now I got a motion and a second with MEMAC with an I and our participation. Any further discussion? Seeing here none, all in favor? Oh, go ahead, Commissioner.
Uh, real quickly, Ms. Hawkins, I want to thank you for your leadership on this resolution. Also, your leadership and briefing us on the weather stuff that comes up, you're right on spot, you're right on time with this. Keeping us up to date on what's happening, especially with the weather that just took place. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay. Appreciate that shadow as well. Uh, all in favor? Okay, we got four oh. Valerie, go back to work. Okay. We have now request approval for application submittal for assistance to firefighters grant, AFG. And we have, excuse me, uh, Mr. Campbell on, and we have Mr. McCoy, and we have Deb Stanford. Okay, Stanford, excuse me. Um, Scott, you want to take this on?
Absolutely. Thank you once again, Commissioners. But by, as a result of the Commissioners, this Board's action October 1 of 2020, when you established the Carroll County Department of Fire and EMS or Emergency Medical Services, it included the creation of the first ever Carroll County Fire Department. That action made the county, for the first time ever, eligible to apply for and if we're fortunate to receive a a grant under the Assistance of Firefighter Grant program. Uh, many of you, and I know Commissioner Lance is personally familiar because I believe his his department's actually benefited from, uh, receiving some AFGs in the past. But this is something that we've always been interested in, but we've never been eligible for because we've never had a quote Carroll County Fire Department. We confirmed our eligibility by actually speaking with someone that actually staffs the Help Desk, as it's known, uh, which are either employees or, uh, folks of the FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, who oversee this program. Um, specifically, as a result of our eligibility, we thought it was worth developing a a proposed application. Should you agree to to allow us to to submit it, requesting 277 portable radios and 111 mobile radios for the county's fire service. And I will gladly elaborate as to the basis for those and what that involves. Uh, please note, Commissioners, that the county has previously purchased port one mobile radios, uh, and subsequently issued them to the fire service. So this is not something new. It's something we have done for years prior to and fully intend to continue to do so now that we have the Carroll County Fire Department. Uh, the radios specified in a proposed, uh, application are part of a planned future purchase. So it's not that we are proposing to buy these, quote, only because we can do so under the grant. This is something that we would do whether or we would propose doing, whether or not we can get it funded under the grant. So, uh, I I need to point out that absent the requested grant funds, if we don't ask for the radios specified under this application, this grant, the county would in fact be responsible for these purchases when they are requested in in the future. So if I can please break down, uh, the 111 mobile So if I can please break down, uh, the one hundred and eleven mobile radios are a one for one. For emergency apparatus, one hundred percent in compliance with as, how it's defined as, uh, under the AFG guidance. Meaning there are some vehicles that a fire department may operate that aren't clearly a, uh, an emergency apparatus, emergency response vehicle. So these mobile radios are for, like our fire engines, our rescue squads, our medic units. The two hundred and seventy-seven portable radios, of that, one hundred and ninety-two would replace the existing radios that we have that are assigned to what are, what are defined as. Approved riding positions or seated positions. I'm showing my age because back in the day, you ride apparatus, you didn't necessarily have a seat, you rode on the back step, you stood up in the canopy cab, et cetera. Those are all eliminated, now they are fixed approved riding positions. So we have currently four hundred and ten of those fixed riding positions. Three hundred and twenty-five have a radio, which means eighty-five do not, they do not have a portable assigned to them or available to them. So of the two hundred and seventy-seven that we're asking under this grant application, one ninety-two would replace existing. The other eighty-five are to cover those seats that do not have a radio. And I'd like to stop there if there's any question about their inclusion and, uh. Uh, Director McCoy is gracious enough to join us to explain that having a portable radio a- available to or assigned to every approved riding position is basically a, a tenant of safety. Which is the foundation of, of, uh, the Director's Department. And if there's any questions as far as the, the need for or the intent to ask for these radios. Uh, outside of this grant application, I'm, I'm sure Director McCoy would be happy to, to field those questions.
Mr. Campbell, thanks for this briefing. I'm curious on the financial end of it about the matching funds in the preliminary budget for next year. Would that be in addition to what you had the previous year, or would those funds be reallocated from other expenditures you had? Would, would this increase your budget or be within the budget of the previous year? How, how do we finance this?
Great question, Commissioner, it would not increase our, our budget. Um. I don't see. Um, I apologize, I'm scanning here, I, I, if Ted hears, I, I believe that the intent would be, there's already in the. How we were preliminary recommended CIP, a request for monies. To purchase radios, not the radios we're talking about here, they're not designated as such, we are not talking about, uh, supplanting budgeted funds. We have many other needs for those monies that, that they would be used for. The, uh, monies that are already included in our proposed spending plan. Would more than satisfy the required county cash match one hundred and sixty-two to forty-five. We would not need to modify our ask or add money to that ask. So Ted, I, I, I apologize, I don't know the, the, uh, the specifics of how that's appropriately done, how our CIP asked. That some of those funds would be put in a different fund, no additional money, it's just where it would go to make it eligible to use for the match. Is that even close to correct, Ted?
Yes. Um, we, we budget every year for radio replacement, this goes on forever. So, um, we were already planning to. Purchase radios, this would provide unexpected funding.
I think you both gave excellent answers and reassured me.
Is that it for your presentation? Because I'm ready to roll here.
Commissioner, I'm, I'm at, at your, uh, disposal if you have questions, otherwise I'd gladly be quiet, listen to your motion.
I move that we've, uh, authorized the submission of an app to the, uh, AFG program as presented. And. Fingers crossed, accept the award.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, I believe I saw, uh, any further discussion? No, good luck.
Thank you, Commissioners, and, and Director McCoy and, and Ms. Stanford, thank you both.
Okay, let's move on to, uh. Rec and Parks with a background check for volunteers, Department of Recreation and Parks. Uh, Mr. Daggett, you're on, Maureen, you're on.
Okay, good morning, Commissioners. Uh. We are here to seek your approval to award for the contract to conduct background checks on recreational council volunteers. To National Center for Safety Incentives, which is NCSI. And we are, um, this was an RFP, so we formed a committee to evaluate both the technical and the financial capabilities. And the, of all the potential vendors, and NCIS scored highest overall with a fee per check of fifteen dollars per applicant. This amount is within the, uh, appropriated budget, and questions on the project, I'll turn it over to Jeff.
Thank you, Maureen. Uh, Recreation and Parks requires background checks of volunteers in certain positions. This would include all rec council board members, board members on youth sports programs, head coaches, assistant coaches. And basically any volunteer who is charged with the care or custody of youth or special populations. Uh, we have some amount of funding within Recreation and Parks operating budget each year, which goes towards this expense. Rec councils also contribute towards this cost by, uh, paying a per registrant fee to the department. We use those funds collectively to pay for these background checks. And as Maureen mentioned and was in the briefing paper, there are no additional county funds, uh, required for this. The cost is fifteen dollars per volunteer to complete these checks, and they are done on an annual basis. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
How much depth do you go into in a background check?
Uh, we're basically looking at state and federal criminal history, any sort of financial information. And one of the nice things about the process that we have set up is we're providing a link to our prospective volunteers. Uh, they will go directly to this company, they will enter their information, they will get the results. The only thing we will see is a thumbs up or a thumbs down. And, and that's it, so we don't need to get into anybody's, uh, personal information or background. And the individuals do have the opportunity, if they have any questions or concerns about what comes up in the background check. They can appeal that directly to the company. And then the company would inform us of the outcome.
We use them before this company.
Yes, we have used them since we implemented this policy. Uh, we've had a excellent working relationship with them, in fact, many other counties within the state of Maryland also use this company.
With that, I'll move, uh. The Board of Commissioners awarded contracts for background checks to volunteers to NCSI.
I'll second that. Uh, real quickly, Director Daggett, how much do you annually budget for this type of expense? And do you foresee next year having a savings because of this?
We currently have, uh, fifteen thousand dollars per year within our operating budget and county funds to go towards this expense. Uh, the number of volunteers varies from year to year. The rec councils pay us a per registrant fee. So you're looking at two or three dollars per child who registers for, say, a youth sports program. That goes into this pot along with those county funds. We use that revenue to pay for the background checks.
Sounds good.
Okay, we have a motion in a couple of seconds, I'm surprised we didn't hear anything about Mark Harmon or Gibbs or Ziva or anything like that from NCIS, but, uh.
It's not the right, it's not the right acronym.
It's close, it's close.
But it's just not, it's, it's, it's this much off, come on, man.
You were thinking it, okay, all in favor? We got four oh, thanks. Okay.
Thank you.
If I could add something real quick, if I had a dollar for every time I said NCIS instead of NCSI, we might not even need that fifteen thousand dollars from you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, and thanks for all you're doing. Okay, let's, uh. That is all the actions for this morning, let's move into public comments. Do we have public comments, uh, Chris?
We had a caller on earlier, they seem to have left.
Okay, so we have no public comments, interesting, I was expecting one, say again?
Chris? No comments today.
Okay, so we will move on to, uh. Uh, admin, uh, open admin. Um, we have, uh, need approval for minutes on closed acquisition, closed land acquisition on January twenty-eighth.
I move we approve?
Second.
Okay, hopefully all have seen, uh. Any further discussion, seeing none, all in favor? Okay, got four oh, and then also need approval of closed minutes from closing admin on one twenty-eight, uh, also January twenty-eighth.
Uh, move we approve?
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second, and all in favor? Four oh, okay. Anything for open admin?
Uh, real quickly. Uh, uh, just a. Quick update on, uh, planning and zoning last night, and in the interest of, of being transparent here. Uh. Several conversations, very good conversations last night. Uh, I think it's important to get some, you know, uh. Some, uh, input on to what's going on there because they're one of our most important groups. So there was a, a lot of, uh, talk about solar and, uh, bringing that on to our ag easements. So, uh, that group is just going to, uh, get more information because it was just the basics last night, so they're moving through that. Um, they, they also went over all the decisions that were made with our comprehensive rezoning, uh, which is good, and a couple of questions, but sort of just went right through. Uh, the only thing I was a little bit surprised by, uh, they, they, uh, started off their discussion, uh, last evening in the meeting, uh, about our budget. And, uh, specifically as it pertains to our CIP budget. So just for my colleagues' information, uh, they got into some areas that, uh, quite frankly, uh, surprised me a little bit. Uh, even suggesting some things that we should do with some of our monies. So as a result of that, uh, apparently there is, uh, there is procedures and process in place for planning, uh, committees. Uh, to comment on the, uh, whether or not there is consistency with master plans. And this is not just here in Carroll, but apparently across the state. So I've asked for, uh, uh, I've asked for a meeting, uh, through Roberta, uh, with the associated, uh, people, just to get a little bit more interest. Or a little bit more information on what it exactly means for planning, uh, commissions to, uh, talk about budget items. So I'll have more for all of you, uh, next week in, in session, uh, just to, to let you know. But, uh, kind of took me a little bit by surprise when, uh, when that, when that conversation began. So, uh, so that's all that I have, uh, and thank you.
Mr. Wance, or Commissioner Wance, I think that was a great segue, what I'm interested in is having a greater understanding through the course of the year. What each department is looking at for their budget requirements. And I don't know whether this is the right time, Roberta can correct me if I'm wrong. Whether previous boards had divided up all the different departments and agencies amongst their membership. So that they would be the contact point person throughout the year, the brief or commissioner on what their budgetary needs are, or even policy ideas. Before they come to the full board, we'd at least have one commissioner in total command of that, that subject. Say, uh, Commissioner Wance is assigned to the planning commission or the playing department. And that any issues that that department would have, Commissioner Wance would have a full grasp and understanding of it and bring it to us and sponsor it on the agenda. Is that something you guys would be interested in? Because I think it'd be helpful for us throughout the year, by the time we reach the budget, we have individually command of certain agencies and departments. Instead of just having a general idea about all of them.
That's kind of why we serve the boards and commissions, uh, that we developed that and over the years, and we, that's why we rotate through them. So we do have those thorough understandings. At that point.
But that, that's part of it, what I'm getting at is say, say you, Commissioner Weaver, have Citizen Services. As one of the agencies or departments that you are the liaison with. You could be briefed monthly with their minutes of their meetings, uh, if they have a policy concern, they could pull you into it ahead of time with, with their county administrator. And get you a better commanding understanding of it, not just, uh, an external board of commission, but actually dig deeper into our different departments. I think it would be helpful to us in the long term to have a better command and understanding going into the budget process. Because when we get our brochures and our booklets on a budget, we see a lot of numbers, but we haven't had a chance to digest all the information building up to that point. I think in the long term, it'd be really helpful for all of us if we divided up these agencies and whether this had been done in the past, not just the commissions, from common actual departments that we oversee.
Go ahead, Commissioner Wance.
Well, now, I'm, I'm thinking on this one, I, I'd have to think about this one a little bit further, other than just.
Right. I, I think. Per, personally, I think there's merit to what you're sharing. Um. I don't think, uh. It's as necessary, um. Uh, I do believe we are close knit enough and our relationships within, uh, the directorates are strong. Um, and my, my, my concern is if one is a liaison to one area, um, that. The others will not engage nearly as much, um. It, and I do believe all minutes, all agenda, I mean, the, the, the commissions, that's really where we get a lot of our, uh, awareness, um. And engagements, um, with, with the directors, uh. The cabinet minutes are very important, the cabinet meetings and the, uh, the work that they are doing to, uh. Get more engaged with those, um, comments, I think are important. I, I don't think we need to separate ourselves in saying one's in charge of being a liaison to one service or one director and one's to another, um. I think our plates are full with what we're doing and we work well together, but, uh, I, I know what you're saying. And there is merit to it and there could be value to it, I just, I don't see it, you know, right now, but that's, that's where I'm coming from. Um. I'd have to, uh, like, Commissioner, I just think more about how we would break it up, but right now I'm, I think we're good. I, I personally think we're very good, so.
I, I like to give the example, Commissioner Wance has a thorough commanding of emergency medical services. And I like the fact that he is the de, de facto liaison for this board because that's his discipline. And I'm very happy with that, you know, none of us can, uh, surmount what he knows about that discipline, and he works very well with that. And on other things, I think like with, uh, Department of Public Works and Waste Management, I think it's important to at least have one of us. To be more in tune with certain departments than the others to represent their needs to the rest of our board. And I also like seeing that when different departments have a policy idea or change, that they do not have the authority to bring it before our board as non-publicly elected officials. That they be forced to bring it to at least one of us and brief us and bring us up to speed and have us sponsor it onto the agenda. Then when that policy item comes onto the agenda, one of us as a colleague has a much better grasp and understanding to be an advocate on the board. Sometimes I feel like we're looking at department heads and we're, we're receiving information all at once. And none of us have a real thorough understanding, so, you know, Commissioner Wance is an example of EMS. And I think if we have someone more on the front end, their deliberations and their debates on the board will be much more thorough. And will reach better decisions on, it's just an idea that's worth putting out there.
No, and again, I, I, I appreciate it, um. I, I don't see. Necessary the value in doing that by partitioning it out, um, and taking personalities of our experiences and, and putting them in, uh. I, 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 I don't see it, I think, I think honestly, the agendas are our agendas, you know? I'm gonna go through the agenda in just a second. And once we go through the agenda, we as a board of commissioners accept the agenda, uh, going out two weeks. If we do not accept the agenda. If we do not accept the agenda, we all have the opportunity to say, no time, this is what we want to do. It's also our due diligence, our work to get with whatever staff it is that's presenting and make sure we are clear in what they're going to be presenting before they they come in front of us. It, I mean, that's on us. I mean, these agendas are not the staff's agenda, they're they're ours once we accept them. Once we go through them, that's that's the role we're playing in this when it comes to agendas. As far as the directorates, and trust me, a subject merit expert when it comes to firing EMS, we are very blessed and fortunate to have Commissioner Wance, who has walked the walk, you know. But all of us have run organizations and in organization design. So it takes all of us to ensure that firing EMS or any of the directorates is is well resourced and able to do their job. It's not, you know, incumbent on just one. You know, as far as subject merit expert, I got it, you know. But as far as organization, I think it's all of us. Yeah, I I'm not one for parsing out, you know, at this time. I think we're doing it. I think we're doing it well. I think if you feel we're not doing it well, getting more engaged from the cabinet, from the agendas, from each directorate, and I'm not pointing at you, Eric, I'm pointing at all of us, and it's on all of us to move forward and to do it harder. But I'm yeah, I I'm not for parsing out the directorates. I I mean, I won't say I don't have time, but I'm looking at this from a resource management perspective on how best to serve our community. Do we have the the people, the organization, and the money in place to do that? I have questions on that, and I'm going to be looking, you know. And we've talked about this processes, procedures, organization overall. But that's on us to do, you know, so that's kind of where I'm coming from. Anybody else lit up?
No, I I agree. I I think it's got, you've got some merit there, Eric, although I think we should, we, I I I don't want to just completely ignore your your thoughts there. I'd like a little bit more time to absorb what you're trying to do there. But I will say, I think we need to, if if we would do something like that, we need to be very careful as well. Because typically, when, you know, over the last six years, and I think Dick will agree with me here, you know, over the last six and a half years that we've been doing this job, you know, if someone has something that they want to present or or share or what have you, they'll make an effort to come to all five of us, and a lot of our directors and staff have done that. And I just, I I think that if one person is assigned or whatever you want to call that to a department, you have the potential there to to be a little bit more shocked or surprised by something as it pertains to new ideas or thoughts or what have you. Because they, over the last, again, six years, countless times, we've had cabinet and and directors come to us. They'll meet because of the open meetings law, and you know, you don't want to get in trouble there. They'll they'll typically use, they'll they'll meet with two of us, and then they'll go to another two, or they'll go one-on-one or what have you. And I believe it's worked well. I believe if we had a bigger organization where where there were a lot of, a lot more folks here, that your your thought maybe would have some merit. But I sort of like the way of of all of us having that global or global look at what we're doing, and Dick kind of said it too. You know, I think it's 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 important for all of us to share any of those thoughts on any of these boards and commissions that we're serving on, just as I did today, just to keep you all abreast of what's going on. So while while I'm not, I'm not, I'm not just throwing, I'm not throwing it out the window, Eric. I think it maybe could be something we'd look at, but I think we would use caution moving forward. So just not prepared to go with, I appreciate the idea, but not prepared to make a decision on that today, obviously.
That's understood. I'm thinking maybe in the future, if Attorney Burke could look into it and see what the history history of this was or is. And one of the reasons I brought it up, because I think when I first was elected, it was Commissioner Wance who mentioned that in the past that some previous boards had done this. And that kind of planted a seed in my mind about us potentially doing this, going back to something that had been done in the past. And I think ultimately, it helps take some of the stress off our county administrator. Because I mean, in administrative sciences, you should not have more than seven different department heads answering to you. And I believe Roberta does an amazing job. She does what most people are not capable of accomplishing. She has, I believe, you know, what is it, 12 different directors answering to her? And that's a phenomenal thing to do, to juggle all that around and be successful. You know, I think the reason we are successful as a board with the composition, the way it's set up now and operation is specifically on the shoulders of our county administrator. And I'm hoping that in the long term, if we can develop some sort of process or procedure in line with what I'm suggesting, this is going to help the people that replace us in two years. And eventually, when Roberta says she's had enough of this and moves on with her her replacement as well. And you know, it has merits, just like Commissioner Wance has said. So if Mr. Burke could do anything, research it and have some ideas and maybe come back to us. This is just out there as an idea, there's nothing definitive. What's an idea or a seed to be planted?
So I tell you, I just, just real, real quick, I don't know what Mr. Burke's role would be in doing anything of this, because we we we're the ones who, you know, figure out what our responsibilities are on the board of commissioners within the realm of being on the board. I mean, how we're going to practice and, you know, process information and deal with the directorates. It's on us, it's not on legal or anyone but us. I mean, that's the that's the fortunate part that I feel is if we want to make a change, we can make a change. It's we, not somebody else giving us, you know, legal advisement. Now, I will share, and I'm going to just be very candid about my thoughts on this because I've had chief administrators in the past, whether I call them chiefs of staff or deputy commanders or whatever. And the chief administrator, Roberta does not have 12 directorates that just fall under her, in my view. They fall under us. The directorates are responsive to us, along with the chief administrator. The fortunate thing that we have is a chief administrator to help navigate the information and the processes from the directorates to us to allow us to make decisions. That's where we're very fortunate. But at no time have I ever thought I delegated responsibility on decisions what we are doing within the county to a directorate or to a or to the administrator unless it's very specific. So, yeah, and and trust me, I know much, I do know something about command and control and three to five, you know, as far as having a responsibility levels. But that's my perspective. If that's not the right perspective, then I'll adjust it. But my perspective, Eric, I got it. Don't don't worry about PowerPoint slides. I'm saying that the chief administrator reports to us. The directorates are also responsible according to us to allow us, the board of commissioners, to make the decisions appropriate for the county. That is not delegated to the administrator or to the directorates unless we are very specific on inaction, like roads or something like that with DPW. So it, because the administrator's responsibility away from talking directly to the directorates, as I do every day. What I do is I add the administrator on to it, again, to help navigate, you know, the information, just like I never blind copy anybody, or I'm very transparent or you know, approachable of getting the conversations, you know, because that's important as we keep, continue to move forward. So, you know, I, because I've heard, you know, you and others have made comments about chief or executors and county executive, they're not. There there's zero, there's zero, you know, thoughts of anybody being an executive. We are the decision makers in the county, and I'm very proud to say that. I'm very proud to do that in that responsibility. And I will not delegate those authorities to anyone, you know. You know, because that's why I got voted into office, and that's my, that's my responsibility. So now, as far as where you were going for us working with a directorate, that does have merit, and I'd like to think more about that, especially as we're moving into, you know, into the budget, into organization design and other things that are on our plate. But that's kind of where my mind is. I apologize, Commissioner Weaver. You had a.
Oh, no. All right, I I was just thinking through your proposal more. I think we do need time to think through this. But we have to also be careful not to micromanage. I mean, you know, we have departments, we have department chairman, and I think we have a very transparent government. And I also think we have department heads that not afraid to address any of us about a concern they have. You know, if they go to Roberta, that's fine. And by the way, she does not walk on water, even though you have her there right now. But she's close, if it's frozen. But I I think they, we really have to think through this, and it's a fine line of our duties and everybody's duties in here that we are not micromanagers of that, of this whole process. I I just need more time to digest this and think through it, I think, so. Good idea to come up with.
I thoroughly agree. I don't want to micromanage anyone myself. I'm not that type of person. I like to delegate. But I do like to get some more insight as the year transpires as to what's going on with, especially with the budgetary needs. Because our number one constitutional obligation is to fulfill the budget. And the more knowledge we have in commanding and understanding that budget within the different departments, I think the better decisions we can make. You know, it's frustrating when we get a booklet dropped on us and we're looking at it, and we all have our jaws dropped, and there's so many numbers and stuff to comprehend. We don't really see the depth of it. What I'm looking for is potentially each one of us having a better depth and understanding of these departments to be their advocates, you know. Maybe Commissioner Weaver could have a better understanding of the sheriff's department. And that when they talk about budgetary needs in the sheriff's department, one of my colleagues would have a commanding understanding of that as a colleague, as opposed to someone sitting in front of me. Because I, though I respect and appreciate them, I think my colleagues sitting in the same position I sit in have a different perspective on their budgetary needs and reflection of what our overall responsibility is. And, you know, this is just a seed planted, it's something for us to think about in the long term, see where it goes. Because like I've said before, in two years, two years is all fly by fast, and the next boards all come in, and anything we can do to be proactive and help them, I think will be beneficial to not only them, but our staff and the county administrator. With that, I'll just close.
I I appreciate it. And again, that's why I think process procedures, like you and I talked about, put something in place on how we, as a board of commissioners, want to run the board of commissioners. And if we can leave a something for folks to chew on as they move in, that's great. So, okay, let me move into the agendas for the next couple of weeks. On Monday, February 8th, Mako will be doing a town hall forum with Senator Van Hollen and Commissioner Wance, and I'll also be calling in on that. And so we'll be talking, I think it's going to be mostly about the pandemic and vaccination, I'm not positive, on that. Tuesday, February 9th, 2021 Community Health Needs Assessment Review, Commissioner Wance will be attending. And then at 7:00 PM, there'll be an Ag Center Board Meeting where I'll be attending up in Westminster. On Wednesday, February 10th, we have Mako Land Use Subcommittee, Commissioner Frazier, and the Tax Subcommittee, Commissioner Wance. And then the two of them will be attending the Legislative Committee Meeting. Again, all of these being virtual. Also on Wednesday at 5:00 PM is a Board of Education Board Meeting. Commissioner Weaver will be attending at 5:00, yeah, 5:00 PM. Thursday, we go into open session, February 11th. We will be discussing the extension of a state of emergency. We will be going through state initiatives, healthcare, all that kind of fun stuff, legislative update. And then some of the action items, we'll get an update on the exploration commons project over at the library. We will be talking the 2022 CTP Priority Letter from Ms. Eisenberg. We'll then be talking fees, water and sewer amendments. Fees with regarding annexation requests, both coming from the Planning Department. We will get a request for approval to exercise the option to purchase properties covered by the IPA. County property, properties through the county program IPA. Let's see. We will request approval, there will be a request approval of change order of the greens of Westminster Stormwater Management Restoration Contract. And then we'll go into open admin. We will have a closed session dealing with land acquisition after that at 12:25. Let's see. At 5:00 PM, Carroll Chamber of Commerce will do their kickoff for Carroll Biz Challenge. I will be attending that. And then Commissioner Wance has the podcast on Valentine's Day. On February 15th, in honor of President's Day, the county offices will be closed. On Tuesday, February 16th is a Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. Commissioner Wance will be attending. And then a Veterans Advisory Council meeting that afternoon. Commissioner Rothstein and Weaver will be attending. Wednesday, the 17th, Mako has its meetings with the subcommittees on land use with Commissioner Frazier, Tax Subcommittee, Commissioner Wance, and then the two of them attending Legislative Committee Meeting. The Community College Board of Trustees Meeting will be virtual meeting at 4:30 PM on Wednesday. Commissioner Wance will be attending. Thursday, February 18th, open session. Typical discussions on state directives, legislative update, and from Ed Center. And then we will be talking from the Sheriff Law Enforcement Body One Camera Project Briefing, where, yeah, Sheriff Dewey and our state's attorney office, Mr. DeLeonardo, will be discussing the the body cams. Wow, that is all that's on open session for the 18th. I'm sure it will fill up. To that, there's nothing scheduled on Friday, Saturday, and Commissioner Weaver has the podcast on the 21st. Okay. Any comments, thoughts on the upcoming agendas? Seeing and hearing none? I need a motion. What's that?
I'm sorry, one quick agenda item for open admin. So several weeks ago, prior to the holidays, the governor issued an executive order that in the, out in the community, it's been referred to as a travel ban. It's not really a travel ban, it's just if you travel outside of the state and the local area, then you should get tested or quarantined when returning to Maryland. For some reason, I, we thought that this was ending at the end of January. It's come to our attention that that the executive order doesn't end in January. It ends actually when everything else ends, which is at the end of this emergency. So if unless unless you disagree, I'm going to notify staff that this does not end and that it would continue. And I didn't want to do that without your agreement. And I didn't want to do that without your agreement. Anybody okay with that? So we just continue to follow the state?
Yeah, I think it's just consistent with everything else that we've done and follow the state guidelines. So until such time as we get different information, I'd say that we continue to do that. I think it's important anyway, that's best practices, because man, if there's something going on somewhere else, we certainly want to make sure that it's not brought here. So I, I would, in the interest of staying consistent with the state, I would say I'm, I'm good, but just me.
I'm saying, I, I think it's a, a consistent message that we've had. And unless there's a difference of opinion, let's just continue. Okay. Okay, I'm going to need a motion to adjourn, and then we're going to stick around to go into closed admin once we're off the air. Is there a motion?
Motion to make a motion to adjourn?
Is there a second? Okay, got motion second. Absolutely see no discussion, all in favor?